Good evening. I'd like to call to order the town council meeting of Monday, July 12th, 2021. It's now about 7:18 PM. We're here in council chambers. Agenda item number one is the Pledge of Allegiance. Agenda item number two, roll call.
Councilor Adams.
Present.
Councilor Catrona.
Present.
Councilor Daniel.
Present.
Councilor Dow.
Present.
Councilor Joe Van.
Present.
Councilor Lozo.
Present.
Councilor Marquetti.
Present.
Councilor Ryan.
Present.
And Councilor Steves.
Present.
All present. Agenda item number three, consider and accept town council meeting minutes of Monday, June 28th, 2021. So moved.
Okay.
We have a first and a second. Any corrections, deletions, additions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll have to abstain, I was absent.
Very good. Any corrections, additions, deletions? Hearing none, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor of accepting the minutes, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? And abstain. We have one abstain, 801. Agenda item number four, subcommittee reports, general government, Councilor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting relatively recently. A lot of the discussion was surrounding the proposed historical commission's bylaw on demolition delay. We also talked about a couple of the items that are on tonight's agenda, and unfortunately, I do not have the minutes in front of me, so I can't get into a lot of detail right now. But we do not have anything scheduled at the moment.
Very good. Department of Public Works, Councilor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We haven't had any meetings. We'll probably be scheduling another meeting within the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Very good. Education and Human Services, Councilor Catrona.
No meetings held, no meeting scheduled, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Planning and Development, Councilor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We held a meeting on July 7th. Agenda items number nine, 21 through 23 are on tonight's agenda. We do not have anything scheduled. Thank you.
Very good. And Protection of Persons and Property, Council Lozo.
No report at this time, no meeting scheduled.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number five, Chairman's announcements. I'd like to offer my thanks to the council for having faith in me. I've got some big shoes to fill, and we have a lot of work ahead of us this coming year. I think it's going to be hard work, but I think it's going to be good work, and I look forward to continuing to help the town to move forward, as I'm sure the council members do as well. So again, my thanks to the council members for their faith in me. As vice chair, I was thinking about what direction the council might have to take in the coming year, and there's a couple of items that I'd like to bring up, if I could, in that I'd like to form some ad hoc committees. Two in particular that I'm looking to form. One would be to develop an evaluation tool for the first year of the town manager. This would need to be done as soon as possible. I'm shooting for a September evaluation date, therefore I'm looking for a late August submission to the council for approval and for the council to begin the evaluation process. The town manager's anniversary date is, I believe, September 8th, so we're in line for that to happen. The second ad hoc committee I'd be looking to form in the near future would be to work with the town manager in the development of a form to present the Year One and Year Six capital plans to council, as required in the chart of Chapter 10, Sections 4 and 10. So, as I solicit your desires for subcommittee assignments, I also solicit your desires to see if you'd like to be a member of one of those two ad hoc committees as well. Councilor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I don't have a problem heading up the one for the town manager's first-year evaluation.
Okay.
I would have no problem being on that either. And I know under normal circumstances, if I may, previous chairman have given us time to think about it a little and like email you for which committees we want to be on.
And that's what I was anticipating happening. I'm kind of taken aback. It's my fault, but I appreciate your interest. Okay, anyone else? Councilor Ryan.
I'd be interested in serving on the evaluation ad hoc committee.
Okay, I'll have some decisions to make. Okay, Council Dow. And over here.
I don't have any, I actually don't have any problem serving on the capital plan committee, if that's what you want.
Mr. Chairman? If I could, if there's a space, I would go on the, I'd help with the capital improvement.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to serve on the evaluation tool for the town manager.
Okay, anyone else with any choices at this point? Okay, I'm going to take this under advisement, and I'll be making decisions within the next two weeks, so that at the next meeting on, I believe, the 28th, I'll be making announcements to the members of the committee, and I also ask you to get your desires to meet for subcommittee assignments as well.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
The next meeting will be the 26th.
26th, I stand corrected. Thank you. Okay, very good. Item number six, town manager's announcements.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Two quick announcements. I did forward an email on Friday. We did receive word from the DEP that the public comment period has opened for 30 days for the liquid natural gas, the LNG plant in Charlton. We did put that on the website. There will be a virtual public hearing being held by Nass DEP on July 29th at 6:30 via Zoom, and the link should be up there under News and Announcements, I believe. And related to that, my second announcement would be that the fire chief, Chief Norman and I did meet with NEC, who is the proponent of the plant in Charlton, and we've continued to meet with them, ensuring that we get adequate training for our fire department, for the inevitable construction of that facility, to ensure that whatever they're doing for Charlton, we get here, because we will likely be the first responders to that site. So, we're continuing to work with them in the best interest of Southbridge. Thank you.
Okay, that's all? That's it?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. Agenda item number seven, presentations. We have a presentation tonight for the host community agreement, presentation by Rebecca Adams of Dutchman LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I will be recusing myself from this discussion and the vote following citizens' forum due to my working for direct competition.
Very good. Okay. Ms. Adams, please.
Good evening. First, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Daniel and Mr. Adams for their newly appointed roles. Thank you very much for your time this evening. My name is Rebecca Adams, and I'm here to introduce the Dutchman. The Dutchman are here this evening to introduce themselves as a company, and discuss the project intent, and also to request a host community agreement for a cultivation facility to be located at 833 Main Street. I'd now like to introduce one of the company owners, Wendy.
Thank you, Rebecca. First of all, hello, everybody. My name is Jose Cano Valdez. My name is Jose Cano Valdez. I'm one of the co-founders of the Dutchman. First of all, I would like to thank the town of Southbridge for giving us the opportunity to establish our business in your lovely town. We're here with our co-founders, and I would like to introduce the co-founders first before I tell a little bit more about myself. The first co-founder that I would like to introduce is Daniela Stringa. Daniela Stringa is a banking professional with more than 15 years' experience, with the last several years in wealth management. The next power lady that I would like to introduce to the board is Floridona Lamica. Floridona Lamica works in the insurance, at an insurance company, excuse me, and she's a project manager with an MBA. The next partner is Arlin Porro. Arlin Porro is an engineer, and as you see, we're a very diverse team. Like I said before, my name is Jose Cano Valdez. I'm 44 years old, born in Dominican Republic, immigrated at a very young age to the Netherlands, where I worked, had the opportunity to work in the cannabis industry for eight years. I run several dispensaries in the Netherlands successfully. Seven years ago, I moved to the United States, got the opportunity to get involved in the cannabis industry here, and that's what we're here for. Next person that I would like to give the mic back is Rebecca Adams. Thank you very much for...
Thank you. And so, as Wendy mentioned, he does have a very strong leadership group behind him, and I'm not sure if any of you know, but I was integral, an integral part of helping Green Meadows go through the inspection process, so I'm a cannabis consultant. And also, on the project team, we also have John Furman, who works for VHB, and we are currently seeking an engineering firm, an architectural firm, as well as a construction firm. So, we're in the preliminary phases, obviously. We wanted to come in, introduce ourselves, so that that way you guys could really get to know who we are as a company and as professionals. You know, we have a strong team so far, and we'll be supplementing that with, obviously, groups that have the expertise that are needed in the areas that we need them. So, John, if you want to come up, and we can talk about the process and into the design. So, you are all familiar, I'm sure, with the process. You've kind of been here, done that, as some municipalities have and some have not. We are requesting to execute a host community agreement with the town of Southbridge this evening. Once we receive that, we can therefore fall into the next phase within the process of working with the Cannabis Control Commission to receive our license. From there, we will submit our special permit application, and we have already had preliminary talks with the town, just so you're all aware. We have met with the police department, the fire department, GPW, so we have already tried to gather as much information as we possibly can before we even, you know, enter into this wonderful process. And so, you know, John will be able to discuss a little bit more about the site, and what we plan on doing there, and some of the idiosyncrasies that the site has, so that we can obviously present to you all our special permit application very clearly. And then, obviously, we would, from that point on, then go back to the CCC, once we have our special permit, and then go through the inspection process in hopes to open. Again, it's a cultivation facility only. There will not be any retail or product manufacturing at that site. And again, the site is 833 Main Street.
Good evening, everybody. I'm John Furman. I'm a director of land development for the Springfield office of VHB, and Rebecca actually smiled when she introduced me, because no one can pronounce our name of our company. It's so complicated, Vanoss, Hagen, Brussels, that we actually shortened it just to VHB, and they still managed to mess it up. So, I just wanted to explain what, you know, it's kind of a joke. She asked me how to pronounce it, I said, "Don't even bother." So, what we have on the screen here is basically an aerial view of the site, and for those of you I'm sure are familiar, it's a former mill that burned down, and we will be looking at the building, which is basically, as you pull in, kind of like dead ahead of you. There's a couple of slides as we go through. This is another view of the aerial of the site, and I want to direct your attention to the building in the middle. I don't know if this will show, yeah, actually, right here. So, that's the building, and when I flip to the next one, we've superimposed a footprint of what we're looking to build. So, if you watch carefully as I flip, hopefully it'll work, and you can kind of see it back and forth. So, the building itself consists of two buildings. There's an old brick building, and then there's a fairly modern metal building. The metal building, which we represent in red here, is the piece that we're going to keep, and then we're going to build around it, and I have some larger views of that. This is the brick building. That part will be coming down. What's unique about it is that it actually shares a wall with the stone wall of the river, and part of the wall along the river is actually coming down already, some of it's actually in the river. So, we're going to be taking that out, we're cleaning up as part of our permitting process. Our new building, what we intend to do is actually hold it back from that wall, so rather than it being on top of that fudewall, we'll be actually pulled back a little bit. The next couple of slides are basically block diagrams of what we're looking at. Again, you can see the red building kind of in the background. This is a view of as you come into the site, and you'll notice the angle here. There is an existing foundation that's already constructed there, and we'll basically be adding or building on top of that, and then everything else you see here will be a new foundation. The next view is a view from the other side, again, seeing the red building, and then what we tried to do is match up the peak with the back wall, so that we could kind of add on to it. That red building is about 5,000 square feet. The new building we're proposing is just under 12,000, so we're going to end up somewhere around 17,000 square feet when all is said and done. This is a generic view of what the building material will look like, a standard metal building. Again, this is not our building, we're just, we're going to be building something similar for that. Again, we have some colored renderings here of the site. The darker green is what we could pick off from actually forested land or forested area from the survey. The green, if anyone's been back there, it's not exactly grass, it's more weeds, but it's, you know, kind of a representation of everything that's not paving. The black is the paving and gravel that's there, and the tan is either a building, which is a self-storage building here, and then our building here, or piles of rubble or debris that'll be cleaned up. When I flip to the next one, if you watch it, you'll see the change in the site. So you can see, there's not much change. I'm going to go back and forth. So you can see, we're adding a small parking area in this corner over here. Kind of tough to see, but a small parking area over here, and the one thing to note is right here, when I flip back again, you'll see how the building basically comes away from the river. So, again, once we have an actual architect on board and have that designed, we'll be able to figure out the flow of the building and the actual footprint, but this is what we decided on generally in that area. Here's an enlargement. This is the existing building. This is the building that's going to be demolished, and then you can see outlined here is the proposed building, so it's a little bit of a larger view. And I think the last slide that I have anything to comment on is what we're calling a proximity map. The zoning ordinance has setbacks that we have to maintain. The first is, this is a 100-foot setback from the actual building footprint to any residentially zoned property, and we comply with that. The next one is a 250-foot setback, which is basically to a non-conforming residential use in a non-residential zone, and again, looking at the area and the neighborhood, we believe we complied with that as well. So, I mean, in general, the only thing I can summarize is the process we have to go through. We actually have to do the special permit. That's our first step. Once we get done with that, we'll be creating applications for the planning board, for the DPW for stormwater review, and then for Conservation Commission, going through that whole process, and then we start building. I'm going to turn it back over to Rebecca, who's going to wrap up. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. So, as John mentioned, we do have quite a few steps in the process. This is obviously the first step. We really would like to make sure that you understand that the Dutchman is excited to be here and to give back to the community. Obviously, job opportunities will be given to anyone that's within the town of Southbridge that is looking for employment and can fit the criteria that's needed. We'll have open dialogue, obviously, with any town officials, as well as any neighbors, abudders, to make sure that we are good neighbors. And as you guys know, the town of Southbridge receives the 3% community impact fee, and we have already negotiated with the town and submitted our host community agreement through ERIC, and the last thing that I know of is that he said that everything looked good and that, you know, really, it just needs to be reviewed by everybody and then executed. So, there was some language in there in regards to giving back to the town of Southbridge, some additional funding for the town to use at its discretion. And I believe, at this point, we really just would love to hear from you if you have any questions. Unfortunately, you know, we are in the beginning stages, so information might be a little bit limited. However, we'd love to hear any response. Yes.
Council Steves.
Thank you. What I think that immediately jumps out at me is, first off, I realize that the CCC process takes forever, but do you have a rough idea of when you're likely to go through the public hearing process and are aiming to open?
Yes, so if I heard you correctly, when will we be going through the public hearing process? And what was the last part of the question?
And when you plan on opening, roughly.
And when do we plan on opening? Thank you. Yes, so once we receive our HCA, we would like to submit and schedule our community outreach meeting right away. We are very eager to move forward as fast as possible. As far as plans for opening, we're estimating that if things go well, and we have our HCA, and we speed through the special permitting process without too many delays, that we could potentially, you know, hopefully be open within, you know, a year, year and a half. Depending on construction, and as I'm sure you guys all know, we are working at a site that has been there for a long time. There's some old buildings there, so, you know, it's like that old adage, "Once you open a wall, you never know what you're going to find behind it." So, you know, we can formalize the schedule and submit that, and we will have that for the special permit meeting as well.
And what do you foresee doing if, unfortunately, you find some sort of contamination in that property, because it was manufacturing for years?
I'm so sorry. I'm a little hard of hearing, so could you just repeat that again?
I said, what would you expect to do if you do find some sort of contamination in the property, since it was industrial for years?
That would be a good question for John. I'm not sure.
That's a really hard question to answer, because you don't know what we're going to run into, but I think the softball answer to that is, you know, it depends on what it is. If it's something that's buried, the DEP allows you to actually, you know, encapsulate it, cover it with an impervious surface. There are different regulations that you have to comply with if you have children of a certain age entering the site, which I don't think we're going to have here. So, it really is tough. I don't, you know, last time we were on there, we didn't see any, you know, oozing tar pits or anything like that, so it's really hard to say, but we have, I've had a site before where the previous owners demolished the building and mixed it all together, and then they found out that the brick had let paint on it, so then the whole site became a cleanup. So, we have, are engaging environmental consultants to do an analysis of the building before it comes down, so that that scenario won't happen, and we have solar borings that we're going to be scheduling, so that'll give us a good idea of what might be buried over there. So, and again, as we develop that, we can fill you in more.
Okay. Thank you.
Council Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So, it's going to be almost 12,000 square feet building, and you only have 12 and 214 parking. You think that enough? How many employees are you going to have there?
Yeah, so the parking that we have on there is basically by code, so we comply with what the zoning requires for that, that square footage of building. The way that we have it laid out, too, is that if we needed more, we could actually expand that parking area closer to Route 9. We're still within the slope away from the retaining wall, but from what we are projecting for employees and people visiting the site, we think that our need is going to balance well with what the code requires.
So, you're saying to me you're going to have only 12 employees and 2...
I can't really see on the print, but I thought we had a little bit more parking than that.
14. You got 12 and the blacks actually...
Yeah, and then there's, I think there's two by the buildings. I think we have 16 spaces, right?
No, 14.
Yep.
Council Marquetti, then Council Lozo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So, this is just going to be a cultivation and manufacturing. There's not going to be any retail taking place at this site, correct?
That's correct. No retail.
So, what would the third-party purchasers be?
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that I clarify. It's cultivation only, so there will not be any product manufacturing or retail.
Says cultivation and manufacturing in the paperwork here. So, just out of curiosity, who would be the third-party purchasers?
Who would be the third party?
Third-party purchasers.
Purchasers?
Who would you be selling this to?
Yes, so, other licensed facilities throughout Massachusetts, so product manufacturers would purchase the product. There's also retail facilities that could purchase product. There are multitude. It would not go to residents directly. There's no delivery.
So, you wouldn't be selling it to home delivery?
No.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Start, Council Lozo.
Yes, I don't have any questions on building or site assignment or anything like that. Once you go through the permit process for a special permit, you'll be run through the ringing by the planning board and everybody else, so as far as a counselor, I'd just like to say, "Welcome to Southbridge. It's nice to put the face, the name, to the project, the Dutchman, and the Globe side of the property down that end, not in that industry, but the Globe's always been the stepchild of economic development. It's always been the American Optical, Main Street, and all this. So, this is like a breath of fresh air. I'm very familiar with the Globe, and the building that you're talking about, taking it down is a plus for the town. Putting the building that you're putting in is a plus for the town. Not only any taxation portion, but that building's an eyesore. It's not really a finished-off building. It burnt, they put a business in there, and everyone was happy. Have a business in there. So, they really didn't dress up the building, but looking at your plans and layout, it's a great first step, and I'd just like to welcome you to Southbridge. Anything we can do? Please see the gym.
Thank you very much. Very happy to be here.
Council Joe Van.
Just to tackle what my fellow colleague, the previous speaker, Council Lozo, said, "Welcome to Southbridge." I know I had had an issue with bringing this forward the last couple of meetings, only because we wanted to put a face to this project. I mean, the town's putting out this host agreement, no idea who you were, what your plans were, what it looked like, or anything like that, so thank you for the presentation tonight, because it gives you a better sense of something that we're going to sign up that's important to the community economically and also to that area. So, I look forward to the planning process, to, you know, bring some life to that area as well, and clean up that section that's been there for a long, long time. So, look forward to working with you on that, and thank you for bringing the entire team here and putting, I know a lot of us did a lot of research, Google searches and LinkedIn, so, all that, so if you see somebody check your link in, that's why. So, but thank you, and welcome to Southbridge.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Very good, thank you very much. Agenda item 7B, an ARPA presentation by the Town Manager, Mr. Michael McCall.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, residents, and invited guests. This evening, I just want to give you a brief overview of what many of us have been talking about and hearing about for the last couple of months. The American Rescue Plan Act, otherwise known as ARPA. That was voted in by Congress back in March. There's been information that's been coming out to the states and cities and towns in the last couple of months, and recently, we started receiving our distribution, our municipal allocation. And it's timely. We've been working, looking at this and keeping abreast of it in-house. And tonight, you will actually have an agenda item that actually talks about using some of these funds. So I thought it'd be appropriate this evening to give you a quick overview of what the ARPA funds entail. Typically, when they talk about what's coming to the municipalities, it's the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. And the presentation tonight is made up of some information that I've garnered from Treasury websites, as well as the Commonwealth, some of the things that we discussed between area-town administrators and managers and staff here. So when we received our last updated allocation spreadsheets, I blew up Southbridge in the middle, we're getting a total of $5,44,950, which is broken down. There's a $1.766 million number, that's our direct municipal allocation. And then the $3.278 million is actually our county allocation. But right now, Worcester County is non-functional, and we're waiting on some guidance from the Treasury to the Commonwealth and Mass before we get those monies. So just to give you a little overview of the requirements for the use of the ARPA funds, municipalities are responsible for determining the eligible uses, ensuring compliance with all relevant federal regulations and rules, and adhering to reporting requirements, and they're quite extensive. The act provides that the payments to local governments will be in two tranches, and the second tranche being paid 12 months after the first payment. And on June 29th, we received our first payment, which was half of our municipal allocation. So about a week or so ago, we received $883,000. So at this time, as I indicated, the Commonwealth is still waiting for how the Treasury will be providing the allocations for the non-functional counties. Once that's been cleared up, we should receive half of that $3.2 million. All funds received must be utilized from March 3rd this year through December 31st, 2024. That means they must be encumbered, and then we have up to December 2026 to actually expend those funds. So we may enter into a contract. We have to do it before the end of 2024, and then we can be paying to get that work done. So the funding objectives set forth in the ARPA legislation, it's 100, there's what's called an interim final rule, and that explains how you can utilize these funds. It's 151 pages long. I've read it back-to-back at least once. I've read several sections of it numerous times. And so the funding objectives boil down into four distinct areas. Support the urgent COVID-19 response efforts. Replace lost public sector revenue. Support immediate economic stabilization and address public system health, public health and economic challenges. And so they give you some examples, supporting public health, replacing of each. The key areas that really will affect us are economic development, the water and sewer infrastructure, and possibly the broadband infrastructure. And some of the example uses, say, for public health or to contain and mitigate the spread of COVID, behavioral healthcare services, and payroll and covered benefits for public health service workers as they responded for COVID-19. To address negative impacts, assistance to workers, to provide assistance to small business, help in recovery, any businesses who are hurt, as well as rebuild public sector capacity. Replacing public sector revenue, that ensures the continuity of vital government services. We're still working on how the calculation is made, but what this will entail, and administration and finance had indicated earlier that they would be working with the cities and towns to come up with a way to calculate this. We have to look at how Southbridge was impacted by the coronavirus pandemic, what types of revenues we lost, for example, hotel meals receipts. And then, once we determine how much money we lost during that time period, we could use some of these funds as, I'll say, a wild card. It doesn't have to follow one of those four areas that we talked about before. Once we find our amount of lost sector revenue, public sector revenue, we can use that money on pretty much anything. We wouldn't be limited to water, sewer, or other things. We could use it for a variety of different things. There is talk about providing some premium pay for essential workers. That goes to third-party employers. I did engage in a discussion with area-town administrators and managers, and they thought that might be difficult for cities and towns to administer, and that might be something better left to the state at a higher level. Water and sewer infrastructure, as I said, includes improvements to the infrastructure. Tonight, you're gonna see something for upgrading some of the water lines on Main Street. Eligible uses also include environmental protection, clean water. Broadband focuses on households and businesses and trying to bring more broadband connectivity to people. As we all know, a lot of people's only lifeline during the pandemic was their ability to get on the internet, work from home, and garner communications with others. There are some special allocations that can be used for certain qualified census-track communities that were disproportionately affected. I'm not sure if our CDBG zones will fall within that area, but we're still looking at it. But there are explicit areas where we can't use these funds. That would be to replace tax, to reduce our tax revenue, or to make pension fund payments. And there are some other minor restrictions. But for the most part, as I indicated, the infrastructure, economic development within the town, restoring businesses that were impacted, would be the primary uses for Southbridge. So taking that into mind, earlier last month, I invited all of the department heads into a room, and we had a collaborative discussion of what we thought might be the appropriate uses at that time. We met right before the election, so we really didn't take into contemplation what would happen with the fire station vote. But we came up with some ideas. We put up essentially a whiteboard and started jotting down our ideas. And we're still trying to determine whether some of these will be eligible uses. I'm trying very hard to find a way to work in some Wi-Fi for the town. And I should just point out that just because we might not be able to fit something into one of these predetermined categories, if we find that we have sufficient lost revenue that we can make up, something that might not exactly fit into one category, we could use those lost revenues to make something happen. So broadband was an issue, because under broadband, we're allowed to spend those monies on cybersecurity. And as we all know, in recent months, cybersecurity has come into the headlines due to some of the hacking and the ransomware that's come into play. We've already instituted something before this. I talked to Will Canoy, our IT manager, and he, we've gotten in contact with the state, and we're doing threat assessments already. But there's ways that we can utilize these funds to better serve the town and protect us in the realm of cybersecurity. We wanna look at building essentially an INET and getting better connectivity between town facilities. And we're gonna look at whether or not this would allow us also to upgrade the telephony between our facilities. We have an older PBX system. A lot of communities had moved to a voice-over internet and actually using cloud-based services. We're gonna see if that's a possibility. Water and sewer, as we indicated, water upgrades. We want to look at Main Street expanding existing water lines for future projects. So that really comes under two hats, economic development as well as infrastructure upgrade. We thought we might be able to use some of this for the Central Street project. If we're gonna have the state come in with the tip project, you know, what could we piggyback and best utilize these funds and leverage them, as well as Worcester Street? So if we are going to be building a fire station in that area, and we need to upgrade the water and sewer lines in that area, this might be an ideal use of these funds as well. Under sewer, we're allowed to use this for any improvements for our wastewater treatment facility, and several department heads have mentioned that we've received comments about the odor in that area, so we could look into mitigating that. One thing that really didn't come up too much in our conversation at the time, which has been further expansion on eligible uses, stormwater may be an eligible use. I've seen it, we've been looking at guidance from the Treasury, the Commonwealth, as well as the National League of Cities, and I think we could start our stormwater project using some of these funds as well. If we are able to find sufficient lost revenue, projects that may not directly fit into any one of these categories might be paving sidewalks, covering increased utility costs, permitting and mapping software, or that telephone upgrade that we had talked about for safety reasons between buildings. Anytime something could fall into two categories, you'll see something in light gray. It might not show up for the folks at home, but mentioned that telephone could fall into two different categories. Supporting the public health response, Chief Norman had talked to us. There may be ways to utilize some of these monies for purchase of another ambulance, because we had to show, or we will have to show that during the pandemic. Given our population, we were running our ambulance more than normal, and it was necessary to have those, the auxiliary ambulance running. So we may be able to justify future ambulance purchase using these monies. Similarly, we talked about town building needs, operating functions, keep up. Community center was used for our EOC, and as you know, the vaccination distribution. Whether or not we wanted to make any improvements for future uses of that building should we have another emergency. And also to address some of the wear and tear that came to that building during the course of the pandemic as it was utilized. So those would be acceptable uses. I know rail trail is near and dear to many of our hearts. We're trying to make the case in a, you know, we're still waiting for additional guidance on eligible uses, but if we can use it on mental health issues and other public health-related issues, we wanted to see if we can make the case that having a rail trail would be a viable use for people who are basically locked down. I know other communities that had rail trails, and they were widely used during the pandemic. People went out, put their masks on, and used them, because people are confined to their homes. They need to get out, and not everybody has a backyard to play in. So whether we could utilize these for rail trail or other recreation, we're still looking at that. Not sure if that will be viable, but it's something that we wanted to include in our discussion. And lastly, whether we could fund or utilize grant monies to get a public health nurse is something we put on our list. Addressing negative economic impacts, one of the things that we talked about here and was talked about by some of the administrators and managers when we had our group conversation, was looking at creating some type of pool of money for matching funds and maybe investments for first-time homebuyers that wanna come to Southbridge to motivate people to come here, motivate people to make improvements on their buildings, you know? And we looked at that, having first-time homeowners or owner occupied, that was something that was of great interest. I have continued to talk with some other members of the administrators and managers network. Someone was looking to draft a proposal, how they would implement it in their town. We're looking to share that. So we think that would be a good use to attract people here and make good use of this money. One of the things we talked about, and again, you'll see this evening, is making water line upgrades, permitting and mapping software may be something that we can utilize, and again, the rail trail. So we're trying to find ways to get these under as many different areas as possible. After we went through this exercise, we asked everybody to go back and think about this and rank their priorities. Normally, you would put number one at the top, it's your first priority, but we actually, for simplicity's sake, we took those numbers and flipped them around, so 10 being your highest priority, and then we added those up. When I say "we," we were all here in the room, and I asked Ms. Dean to tally this for me. So Ms. Dean did some of the work here this evening. She created this slide for me. But broadband, rated up as one of the highest things, as well as the ambulance, making improvements. We talked about possibly creating a wireless network downtown if we built out our broadband infrastructure. That would allow our citizens to utilize it, but it would also create a benefit to local businesses if they wanna be a destination. A lot of people like to come to a coffee shop or a restaurant and get on Wi-Fi. Not everybody can do that, but it might be something unique. There's only a couple of towns in the Commonwealth that currently have that type of public Wi-Fi. And then looking at some of the other issues, there's a myriad of things that are up there, but we all saw merit to almost all of those issues that are up there. The one thing that wasn't on there, as I indicated, because we didn't focus on it, was stormwater. But these are all areas that we think would be beneficial to the town. We will continue to look at these, and we will continue to bring projects forward for your review, like this evening, to utilize these funds in the best interests of Southbridge. I'm happy to entertain any questions, but I want to give you an idea of what we can do with these funds as we begin to utilize them. Right now, as I said, we have $880-some-odd thousand that we would use, and we would be proposing projects to utilize these funds, and then we would come forward to you folks, obviously, as we engage in any contracts or any proposals for the expenditure of these funds. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, and I'll entertain any questions.
Mr. Cutrona, Counsel Cutrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the Town Manager. Can you make this available on the town's website, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel McCarty?
If I may add, I can also try and assemble a quick list of links to the US Treasuries, the frequently asked questions.
Thank you.
I have, I've built a list of good ones myself, and so we'll share some of that.
Counsel McCarty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, is there any of the funds going to be going to the schools?
Well, there is directly to the students.
To the school, the Southbridge school system?
I'm just having a hard time. We did not put anything in this particularly, but I do think if we are able to make any improvements into the connectivity in town, either through broadband or extending Wi-Fi, that would be of a benefit. I was looking, there is separate funding that was supposed to be available through the FCC, I believe primarily to schools, to help build up some of their infrastructure. So I think there are separate buckets of money that were set aside for schools directly. These are the ones that were coming to the cities and towns. And if I can find something in here that would fall into one of these categories, I can look into that.
All right, thank you. I thought that when we did the budget sessions, I thought that the receiver said that they were counting on some of the money, but it may have been some other source. I thought it was this source. But I think it's important that we do contribute to the school system as much as we can. That seems to be one of the, some people feel that that's some of the problems that we are having in this town is our school system, and I think we should try to give. Since they really kept the budget pretty low this year, I think it's important that we do give them something out of this. The other thing is, public safety, police, is any of that qualified under this?
Yeah. There could be ways under the pay for essential workers, there could be ways to do that. There is some set aside eligible uses for third-party. There could be some that are eligible for perhaps frontline workers, but then we would have to look at the definition, because there are a lot of non-traditional people that were frontline workers during the COVID pandemic, DPW employees, inspectional services employees. So we would have to look at that.
All right, thank you.
Counsel Lazo, then Counsel Stewes.
Mr. Town Manager, the priority list, that's the recommendation of the department heads. correct?
Yes, I wanted to get them together as, you know.
Is this going to come into the council realm for final prioritization?
We could do that. I figured I would give you an introduction as to what we could do with it and what we thought would be a good use, and then propose projects, or if you had some projects that you amongst yourselves wanted to advance, we could look at how they fit in.
Okay. Because one of the, one of the things that caught my eye quick was sidewalks were fourth from the bottom, which has been a top priority of the council for at least two or three years, and we got back on track with roads as a priority. I saw the paving way up at the top of priorities, but I saw the rail trail up on the priority list, and I see the sidewalks fourth from the bottom. And my common sense tells me that people walk on sidewalks on a daily basis, and we know the conditions of sidewalks. Wouldn't we fix what we have before we expand to a more elaborate rail trail?
So the difficulty becomes, how do you get that to be an eligible use? So sidewalks doesn't fall into any one of the main categories. So my read on this, if we had, we were able to generate sufficient lost revenue numbers, that's one of the, where we could spend a wild card. Now, the other way you might be able to get some of the paving and sidewalks is part of an infrastructure project. So if we're going down Main Street, or South Street, or Worcester Street, if we're out there, when we put pipes in, we may be able to pay for the paving. And if we have to cut in and we did, so it's not one of, their main buckets are really, as I said, water, sewer, broadband, negative economic impacts.
I just thought that sidewalks and paving would walk together on the priority list and they were miles apart.
It may be easier to get the paving over the pipes than the other side.
No, I understand that point. Thank you.
Counselor Stevens.
Yeah, I just wanted to answer Counselor Marquetti's question. The school department received funds from what it's called the Esser Grant several months ago, and I think they have a similar long-term timeframe to spend it. I don't know exactly how much money they got. It was several million, though.
Any other discussion? Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We come now to agenda item number eight, Citizens Forum. Agenda item eight.
Can't see this evening.
Very good. Are there any citizens who would like to address the council this evening? Please state your name and address for the record.
Scott Wharton, 311 Morris Street. Good evening, I'm thankful to be here. Thanks to all of you for serving the community.
Good evening.
And I apologize for my phone's misbehavior earlier. So I have a couple items. The first one is that the Morris Street Speedway is open, and I'm asking if there can be some police details posted maybe on Deer Run, is that the name of the street? Because they're going pretty fast down the hill, and that spot gives them a good location as they're coming down the hill. New family just moved in, they have small kids, my kids are older, but still. The second subject that I have is regarding the golf course again. I was here before with a bag of goodies for you. Is there any way that the town can request that the landowner put a cable across the entrance or something? I understand private property, but if we have a condemned building, we board it up so nobody gets in there. This land is open for any vehicle to drive in, drive the roads all the way to the back. I'm here because the other night, a couple weeks ago, there was a large party back there with a bonfire where they were burning pallets and whatnot. So the fire pit was almost as big as the rotunda here. I'm not that old, it wasn't many years ago that I was at those parties, but I think that there's underage people back there that are consuming alcohol. My friends and I went back and kind of spied on them. There were at least 20. I believe they're underage because there was a white pickup truck back there along with about six, eight other vehicles, and the next morning I saw the same white pickup truck with some young kids swimming in the pond that's there. I go back there to walk my dog. I have Elias Hannah, who's, who I believe the landowner's permission to be back there. And I don't want to see anybody getting hurt. I don't want to see drunk kids at 2:00 in the morning driving away from the party down Morris Street and wrecking themselves or someone else. I don't know what can be done because it's private property, and I know police can't just go, but I guess I'll leave it with you to see if there's something that we can do. My elephant in the room, which I haven't heard much discussion of yet, but it's the fire station, and I'm not for or against a new fire station, but I am against the way that the whole process transpired, which at a time like it is now, where we're coming out of a financial hardship, many of us, to raise taxes is, to me, not, you know, feasible. Most of the information that I gained about the fire station was because I happened to see a post on Facebook, which I don't go on Facebook often, but I happened to. At that time, I engaged, and I educated myself with hearsay from people. I did watch town meeting. Some people don't participate in virtual meetings, in fact, many don't participate in virtual meetings. I had no idea that this was even an item until I saw a post on Facebook about it, and I honestly don't feel like a town should operate in that manner on Facebook. Some people, again, some people don't have access to virtual meetings. So to hold virtual meetings, I learned more about the cannabis facility here tonight than I did, you know, than I know about the vote that took place. Voter turnout was lower at that vote, and I would think that it would be higher. Common sense would have told me that it would be higher with such an important issue. So I honestly feel like for an expenditure of that amount of money, this should have been better notice to the citizens so that they knew the importance of what was going on. Just my perception, be it right or wrong, was that, you know, all of a sudden this popped up and we all had to vote on it. I might have voted differently if I was educated more, and to, just to quote one of the counselors, what you said about the cannabis company, that it's nice to put a face on a project. Well, there's a lot more value to what we're doing here today than there is to looking through a camera with a limited audience. And again, I think that with an expenditure of that amount, I think that it merits more meetings face to face, so people can be educated, and I've educated voters at the polls, instead of people going on hearsay, that's all we really had, on Facebook. And then it became villainization of some and hero-making of others, and if you vote no, you don't care about firefighters, which is not the case. So again, that's just opinion. I know that Counselor Marquetti had suggested doing something to have some form of revote or something. I don't know, you know, if that's even an option, but I think it's something should be considered to educate the people and get educated people to the polls, and I don't think that that can be done on a virtual type meeting. So COVID affected a lot of stuff, and maybe the fire station should have waited until due diligence and proper meetings should have been had. And then my last question is, the old fire station, is there a plan for that facility? And if so, what is that plan for that old facility?
It's my understanding that that will be looked into as the process continues. I know that the town manager is very involved in that, and I know that the Firehouse Building Committee is also involved in reuse of the old station.
So again, if the building, if the building was unsafe enough that we had to get this new fire station in the manner in which we did, I would think that the building would be demolished. And then I don't know if the cost for demolishing that building are included in the proposal for the new fire station or not, so. And then we heard about water lines and sewer lines that would have to be upgraded for the new fire station, and I don't know if that was included in the 25.7 million, so.
Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I know one of the things that often happens with a lot of those old buildings that are too expensive for towns to fix is that private industry will come in and be able to pick them up at a much cheaper rate. One thing when it comes to state bids and state contracts is everything's through the roof, all the bridges, everything. But then a private industry can come in and do it cheaper. One of the studies we looked at, looked at rehabilitating the current fire station, and that ended up being more expensive than just building a new one. So that was one of the considerations that went into that. So that's, that's why I think the committee needs to take time and look at it, because they have to see if there's, there could be possible interest from private industry to want to rehab and re-get that building back up to the pristine condition we know it could be in. At least that's my perspective.
Sure, sure. I would, again, I would think that if someone can go in and use the building, then we could have done something to use the building, but, you know, I mean, even if it was leveled in the current location, but that's a conversation maybe for a different, you know, a different meeting, a different day. So thank you for the time. I just wanted to give opinion, and I guess that's it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please approach the podium. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Father Ken Cardnally. I'm the pastor of St. John Paul II Parish here in town. I live at 279 Hamilton Street, the site of St. Mary's. And thank you and congratulations, everyone, and thank you for inviting me to do the invocation tonight, although from what I'm about to say, some may regret they invited me, because I do want to address this proposal for the site to cultivate the marijuana crop. And I, with all due respect, I know that you're trying to run a business, and a legal business. I know that marijuana use recreationally and medically these days is legal, but just because something's legal doesn't necessarily mean it's something that we should embrace or countenance. You know, I've been a priest for 25 years. I started here with Father Peter almost a quarter of a century ago. 279 Hamilton Street is right in the heart of the 600 block. I've seen what drug use and drug abuse can do to human lives. I know that this proposal is simply to grow the marijuana, but if I understand correctly, we're going to have a distribution site right on Worcester Street. We used to be known as the Eye of the Commonwealth. How much, how much longer is it going to be if we welcome this into the town before a manufacturer is going to want to come, because everything is going to be all in one? We're really looking, I know the town needs economic income, and it's a temptation, but to profit off of human vice naturally as a minister, I don't ever think that's a good You know, we say that it's not in a residential neighborhood, but as I stand on the steps, front steps of Trinity Catholic Academy, our grammar and middle school, Tom Brady probably could hit the site with a good throw of a football. It's that close to where our kids go to school. And when we tell our kids that drug use and abuse is an escape and a dead end, how are they going to believe it when we're manufacturing, we're growing, selling, and one day maybe manufacturing marijuana right here in our town? I didn't know this was going to be discussed tonight, and I know people might not agree with this, but I think it was providential I was here, and I, as a citizen, urge us to not embrace this. There must be some other way we can invigorate our economy and invite some, some sort of industry into our community. So thank you.
Counselor Ryan.
I'm not going to address the specific proposal, but I'm going to address one thing. I am a medical marijuana user. I don't use it for vice, I use it to deal with my pain. I've broken my back twice, and I am in crippling pain almost all the time. What I heard was the same rhetoric that the war on drugs used for a very long time. It's not the case. I urge you to go down to one of these facilities and hear about the good work that is happening in this industry, because I think a lot of people need to learn and educate themselves about the true facts of how marijuana can be used, and used to benefit people and enrich lives and make things better for them. That's all I have to say, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Counselor Jovan.
The purpose of Citizens Forum is for citizens to bring issues that are not on the agenda to the council, and then we have agenda items, number one. Number two, it's not a position for councillors to get into debate or to, it's simply the Citizens Forum portion, my understanding, long term, is for citizens to bring issues to the council, the council not to respond to them and to have them referred out to, well, in a way, not to have a debate, but to just simply say, we take your information, we request further information about what it is and refer it to the proper committees, not our personal, but that's my understanding of Citizens Forum. That's all. And this is an agenda item, so.
This is an agenda item. So we'll bring this up as a proper agenda item. Counselor Lasso.
Just on process and procedure, Jack and I, the previous speaker, my good friend, Citizens Forum was created for citizens, and when citizens come up, they express themselves. As far as a rebuttal to somebody at the Citizens Forum, it's been very common over the years. It's not the intent, is, in other words, I have my opinion why I support the marijuana I choose from the business sector, I could have aired that out, but out of respect to the citizen, he's, he's putting his advice forward to us. So on this, I don't want to comment, I did not want to comment, but you are allowed to comment. If somebody takes a stance across the aisle, the councillors can respond respectfully. On this here, I just thought, you know, no response on my behalf was a better answer and take the advice of the clergyman that, you know, geez, that, I'm going to take that under advisement as a councillor, although on my end, it was a whole financial situation. I've never smoked marijuana in my life, but they'll go over the border and buy the marijuana in Charlton, Sturbridge, and Dudley. So from my viewpoint, it was a business thing that it would be better off, but I, you know, I didn't want to answer it, but that's an example of Citizens Forum is for the citizens. Jovan's right, but the citizen doesn't have a right to come up here and slam the council, which you didn't. I'm talking about a different example, and that's happened, and we are entitled to respond to somebody that goes at you. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to hold the discussion at this point. I think both sides have stated what they've stated elegantly, and I think we'll move on to the agenda item, and we can address it further at the agenda item.
I just, just wanted to add, I personally do draw a distinction between the medical use of marijuana and recreational use. So I just wanted to have a chance to clear that up, to say, but the fact is that marijuana is now, recreation use is now legal, and the fact of the matter is that a lot of what we grow here will end up being used for recreational reasons. But I did want to clear up that I, I recognize that there's a great deal of difference between marijuana that's used to relieve human suffering and marijuana that's used as, for other reasons, recreational reasons. So thank you. Thank you.
Very good. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Anyone else? Seeing no one else, we'll go to agenda item number nine, which is vote to ratify the host community agreement between the town of Southbridge and the Dutchman LLC regarding the siting of an adult-use marijuana establishment, cultivation, and manufacturing in the town of Southbridge at 833 Rham Main Street, Assessor's Map 33, parcel 02C.
Second.
Very good. Is there any discussion? Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this one through my subcommittee. Voted on unanimously of all present that evening. I do want to, I held my tongue until the agenda item at this point in time, stood during the presentation, I appreciate all the councillors' comments and concerns and positive feedback as well. We, you know, we've set up a precedence with our first cultivation slash marijuana site by allowing them to come up in front of us and speak on their behalf and introduce us. introduce each other to, to us and us to you as well. So I do appreciate you all coming down here today, having a great presentation, providing a, I'm assuming a conceptual design of what it's going to look like at that point in time. I do want to thank you for not providing your security details or whatever, because that has happened in the past, and we don't want to make that mistake anymore. So I do want to thank you for coming down here, spending your, their evening with us. I do ask that if this goes through this evening, if you could provide a soft copy to the, to Eric, please. That way we can put it up on social media or other sites as well, so residents do know what's coming aboard if it passes. Also, I do want to thank you for redeveloping that area with the intent of redeveloping that area. Obviously, we have a flex overlay right now, and that really is continuing to help out the old Mill Street and that entire area over there. So we're looking forward to great things within that area of Southbridge itself. I don't think I have anything else, but again, Mr. Chair, it was unanimous of all present. There were some questions about dates and all that kind of stuff. I asked the same question again. My, my, again, my concern would be on, for the $20,000 that, under the host agreement, we don't want to be like another city that got a little bit of trouble, where the city was responsible for the funds that were going to not-for-profit organizations and where funds were abused, or that's the accusation at this point. Again, I just try to look at that last part where you're, you're looking at providing $20,000 to a not-for-profit organization within town. Take a look at it again and maybe, obviously, probably work with the town, but at the same time, ultimately, I would be, I'd feel better if you guys just made that decision, obviously report to the town. That's just one person speaking, but I think I've mentioned that every single time a host agreement has come aboard, so thank you very much.
Counselor Lazo.
I'll be voting in favor of this, and I, my, my driving issue with this industry is it's competitive, and I want Southbridge to be competitive, and I want it to go out and be hungry for industry. I'm looking at where this facility is going to be put. You couldn't have picked a better place in the heavy industrial zone area at the time was the Old Mill. It's kind of secluded. You have a, one entrance in. It's, it's an interesting facility as far as land mass, cut off from the neighborhoods from, by a river. So I think, you know, the Globe is going to get a shining arm as far as a facility. And again, if we do not pass this and they go up the road to Sturbridge or Charlton or Dudley, which they are, they are dispensaries out there and cultivating, and what's going to happen is the 3% income that we're going to get, or any other income that the town is going to get, is going to go to another town. And our citizens are still going to drive up to Route 20 in Charlton and buy what they need, whether it be recreational or medical. So for myself, I've never smoked marijuana in my life, I'm not a drug guy. The way, the way I look at it is a couple of Excedrin in the morning usually cured most of my ailments at my age. So for me, I'm a yes vote tonight, and I'd just like to say to the, to Counselor Adams' job well done. Thank you very much for the job you did on us.
And your subcommittee. Counselor Katrona.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, echo the former, the, the councilor's comments. Thank you very much for coming forward this evening. I will also be supporting, supporting this this evening. Again, great location, and if this passes this evening, welcome. Thank you.
Counselor Dyer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I think by doing things legal, be washed by the police department, by the town, maybe we can educate our kid not to be doing it on the street illegally. Maybe we can show him the right way, because obviously it's legal now in Massachusetts and used for medical and all this stuff. So I think it's a good idea to continue, provide the right Medicare for the people in a legal way. So I think I'm going to be a favorer tonight. Thank you.
Counsel Jovan.
I'll defer to Counsel Katrona.
Okay, Counsel Katrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, one more quick comment to the town manager. Did you review this contract?
Yes, the, the HCA that we used here this evening is similar in nature to the ones that we've used before, and I believe the template originally came from the Cannabis Control Commission.
Thank you.
Counsel Jovan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the, one of the previous speakers. My intent at the reason of the point of order was not to quell any discussion by a citizen. Citizen had every right to discuss this. My question, my, my point of order was to the fact that we have rules and regulations that say that they do not address an agenda item, and this was an agenda item. Should have went to the agenda item. Didn't raise it at the beginning of Father Ken's presentation out of respect to, to him and his longtime tenure in town. So I welcome discussion, and that dialogue should take place at the agenda item at the correct period of time. So that, just for the record, don't want to be accused of trying to stop citizens from talking, because I would have raised something and debated the gentleman that spoke before that on the items that he brought for, but that was not the time and the place to do To this point, this, this question, everybody knows my position on marijuana from the very beginning. Counsel Adams, when I became chairman of the council three years ago, brought this forward saying, hey, we have the bylaw on that restricts us from doing marijuana. And we worked as council to, and I had to put my personal opinions, as being involved in law enforcement for over 30 years, but my personal opinions on marijuana to what was best for the Town of Southbridge. And we put this out to the ballot for the Town of Southbridge on a non-binding referendum to say whether you wanted us to allow this in the Town of Southbridge. The Town of Southbridge spoke and gave us clear guidance. So that's why now the next step was to do this in a sensible manner for best of Southbridge. So I understand Father Ken's sentiments, but the Town of Southbridge voted for this, for us to move in this direction, and I thank our council and our town manager for putting together sensible host agreements, and for your group to be here this evening, that's why I was so strong about, I want to know who we're giving these host agreements to, because it's important, it's long-term. So I will support it because we got the guidance from the people. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion? Counsel Mark Hattie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I see that Eric is here, maybe he can answer some of these questions. In the, in the agenda item, it does say cultivation and manufacturing, but the Dutchmen said that they are not going to be manufacturing at this particular site. So if Eric could answer that, that would be helpful.
Good evening, everyone. Counsel Mark Hattie, through you, Chair. Sorry, Mr. Chair. The reason we put cultivation and manufacturing on the host community agreement is because the bylaw, the zoning bylaw lumps manufacturing and cultivation in as one entity. So for that purpose, whether they use the manufacturing or not is, in my mind, sort of irrelevant. It gives them the option in the future if they want to amend their special permit in the future to come back and say, you know, we, we've decided we want to take on some manufacturing, we think our profits are going to be higher or something, whatever. I don't know, you know, exactly what the reasoning would be for that. That's not my business that is there, so it, it, you know, it's kind of almost a way to future-proof their entity. Initially, they had spoken to me about trying to secure a retail license, and as you all know, we have, in our bylaws, limited to four retail licenses. We have issued four retail licenses. And if I may take this opportunity, opportunity, if you increase that number to 12, I could fill every single one of them. I'm not saying that that's what the town should do, I'm just telling you based upon the phone calls that I receive on a daily, weekly, monthly basis, the town would have no problem with filling additional licenses for retail establishments. However, in this case, for this evening, you know, I've been working with the Dutchman group to find them a location, working on drafting their host community agreement, which again is based upon the agreement we utilized for Green Meadows for their cultivation and manufacturing. There's very little changes in there. I know there was a question regarding the contribution, and I, I believe, you know, the kind of the intent there is so that the town isn't necessarily involved in the decision-making process, but that the town through you, the council, is aware and would agree to where those funds would go. Think of it as like a checks and balances, if you will. You know, if a fly-by-night nonprofit approaches them and says, you know, we're this great charitable organization in the Town of Southbridge, and they give them $20,000 and it's embezzled or whatever, you know, that, I think the town has a missed opportunity there to not say, hey, you know what, we've never actually heard of these people, that kind of a thing.
Okay, could you refresh my memory on the 3% for cultivation, and then wasn't there another 3% for retail? So if there was retail, it'd be 3%, 3% on cultivation, and 3% on retail for a total of 6%, right? Is that how it worked?
It's, that's sort of how it works. So what, what we did with the Green Meadows host community agreement, because they were manufacturing and cultivating for their own facility, they agreed to a 3% for intra-wholesale pricing, which is, so whatever they would sell to themselves, they agreed to, to give us a 3% on top of the retail 3% that we would get at, at a later date. In addition to that, we do have the tax that is 3% also.
If I could continue. Wasn't there a, an impact fee on top of that, or just?
Correct. There is a, an impact fee for charitable donations, which is in the amount of $20,000.
Oh, so it's the donations, the?
Correct, yes. And that's the same dollar amount that we use for Green Meadows for their cultivation facility.
Right, okay.
For their retail facility, along with the other three retail facilities, the annual donation for charitable contributions is $35,000.
All right. Thank you. I'm all set.
Very good. Any further discussion? Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Okay, there being no further discussion, we'll take a vote on, on the agenda item. All those in favor of the agenda item, raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present, with one abstention.
Good luck.
Agenda item number 10, vote to ratify the agreement between the Town of Southbridge and Jennifer A. Reynolds, creator, director of the 21-Day Firm Programs for the Senior Exercise Program at the Casablanca Center for 46 weeks at a cost of $50 per class paid by the Council on Agent Grant.
Toma, second.
There being none, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Number 11, vote to confirm the reappointment of Anna Smith as landfill coordinator effective immediately through June 30, 2022, to provide the necessary coverage of the final phase of the landfill closure and post-closure review. Ethics training is in good standing.
Toma, second.
Any discussion? Counsel Mark Hattie.
As I've said before on this one, I don't think that this position is necessary anymore. The landfill is closed. I, I know that when Ms. Smith took the position back in 2010, there was an understanding, and when the landfill closed, her job would, would end. The landfill closed in 2018. Any post-closure that's going on at this point is under the monitoring of Casella, and then the Mass DEP is required to monitor. Casella is monitoring the landfill. So I just feel that this is an unnecessary position, and I don't think we should continue to, to provide this job.
Counsel Steves.
Yeah, I have a quick question through you to Andy. Do we have any idea when the capping is actually likely to be done?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm sorry, Gus, I couldn't hear that question. I know.
I asked if there's any idea of when the capping is likely to be done.
The Casella, the contract that I hired is on track for the completion of the capping at the end of the fall, towards the end of September. We expect, we are right now suffering a ton of DEP reviews, well testing, surface water testing. We're constantly getting, we have to review all of the documents on the, that turf they use in is all, I think there's only one other landfill in Massachusetts that uses that turf. So there's a lot of review going on through the closing, but also post-closure to Mr. Mark Hattie's point, the, I'm asking the council to support this position for this remaining year. One, this would be the equivalent of building the fire station without a clerk of the works or somebody to oversee the fire station. This is a multimillion-dollar closing with serious environmental repercussions if we don't keep a close eye on it. So I encourage you to keep the position open through the closing. That will get us through the end of September, early October, and thereafter, all of the immediate testing and, and follow-up that would be done. I'd have to re-analyze the need for it in the spring, but for right now, I believe it's a critical position, and I think the town should support it. It's not paid for by town funds. The, this is no impact on the taxpayer at all. Casella pays for every dollar that she spends working directly as the landfill monitor, and whatever free time she has, she's doing recycling efforts, which are going to help us in our, whatever we replace the contract with, the crib site contract, and the monies that are being used for the recycling efforts are also Casella funds that must be dedicated to that. So this position is zero burden on the tax dollar.
If you don't mind if I follow up on a, a slightly tangential topic, but you brought it up.
Okay.
Okay. You brought up landfill well testing, and I remember that came up. You brought up landfill well testing, and I remember that came up at a recent Board of Health meeting. Where does that stand in terms of the well testing that Steve Gregoire reported concerns about?
Those well tests, the wells are completed, DE, they are waiting, actually, I think they just got approval for the testing methods. Every well that they test at their DEP has to give them the approval on how they're going to be testing it, what they're going to be testing it for, the equipment that they're going to be using to test it. They just got approval for that. I suspect that the wells will be tested with the next round of, you're talking about the two brand-new wells, BW5 and, I'm sorry, BR5 and BR4.
I don't know what their numbers are. They're the ones, they're the ones that Mr. Gregoire brought up as concerned about sending silt and other sediment into his well.
Those are the ones that Mr. Gregoire brought up of concern because they're the most recent drilled. They haven't been approved, they just got approval for testing. Actually, I believe they just got approval for testing this week. So once they get all the proper equipment in, they should be involved in the next round of testing.
And when will that be?
They're doing quarterly, I believe. We just finished the June one, so we're probably looking at Septemberish.
Okay, thanks.
And those wells are designed primarily for groundwater flow direction, but I believe we're going to do quality tests out of them, too.
Have you heard any more complaints from that neighborhood about the similar issues? Have you heard any more complaints from that neighborhood about similar issues?
I'm going to be in touch with Mr. Gregoire. You asked if there was any more complaints from that neighborhood. It wasn't really a complaint as much as a concern. He, he experienced turbulence in his well while they were, while they were drilling those wells. We're going to take a good look at the groundwater flow in those wells to determine if that was what caused his turbulence. We didn't get any concerns from any other citizens on the hill, but his is the closest to the, to BR5. So obviously, we want to take a real good look at the ground flow once they start doing the tests on it.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Mark Hattie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Mr. Pelletier, during the budget session, I asked you if we are, you said we were receiving funds from Casella to pay for Ms. Smith's position, and I asked you for evidence of the source of that fund, and I've yet to see any of that funding source from you. the source of that fund, and I've yet to see any of that funding source from you. So it's my concern is, once we hire somebody, whether it's being paid by Casella or whether they're being paid through a grant, we never seem to be able to stop employing them. Once the grant ends, once the funding ends, they continue to work for the town, and then the taxpayers have to start footing that bill. Personally, I have not seen any reports from monitoring the landfill, so I don't think there's really much monitoring going on. But as I said before, this is something that I believe Casella is responsible for, and Mass DEP is responsible for overseeing Casella, so I don't think we have to worry about something as serious as the landfill, because it is also already being monitored by the company, which for years you said they were a great company and you trusted everything they said up there. You said that the landfill was fine, there was no contamination. Turned out there was contamination, but you swore by them, you said that they were doing a good job up there, and then it turns out that there was contamination up there. So I think Mass DEP has taken over the monitoring of that landfill, and that's as far as we should go. They have an obligation to oversee Casella's closure of that, post-closure of that landfill. So as far as I'm concerned, it's in Mass DEP's hands now, and I think it's time for us to start thinning out that department, because I just feel there's too many people working in your department at this time. And I know part of your salary also comes from the landfill contract, which-
Counsel Marketti.
Pardon?
Please, you're straying away from what the agenda item is.
Well, I'm just saying that I have yet to receive any report on the funding from Casella, and they ended the contract. They ended the contract, and we no longer, the only thing we have from them is curbside. The rest of it has all been suspended, so I'm just not sure. Unless he shows me evidence that we're receiving funding for her position, I think it's time to eliminate it. That's all.
Very good.
Thank you.
Counselor Jolene.
Just to clarify, on the previous speaker's comment, he's incorrect in saying that the contract has been terminated. Casella is bound by every single provision in that contract until the end of that contract That is part of the settlement agreement, which is public record, which was done by this council, as I was here. Every single bit of that contract is in full force until it ends. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if I could respond, I won't go any further than that. It's just that I have read the agreement. It is posted on the town's website, and not everything is covered under that agreement. But that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just off of Counselor Marketti's, and maybe I don't remember that far back, isn't it in your budget saying where the funds were coming from?
The budget spelled out that the funds are coming from, they're reimbursed by Casella, and the other part of her job is reimbursed.
And it states that in the letter, it says it in your budget, correct?
It's in the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Well, if I could respond to that, if everybody's going to keep bringing up my name, my name, and contradicting everything I say, I should have a right to speak to it, should I not? I mean, I'm not contradicting anybody else up here. I only speak to the issue, to Andy, and then I have other counselors contradicting everything I say. So if they're going to do that, then I feel that I should have a right to do that. I asked him about the budget, and he said it's coming from Casella, but he's yet to show me evidence that we are still getting money from Casella. And that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
And all I'm saying is, the agenda item has got to do with Anna Smith, the landfill coordinator, and her reappointment, and some of the conversation, when you're getting into, in my opinion, when you're getting into talking about the source of funding for the inspector, I think gets away from what the agenda item is. And that's what I'm saying. I think we've gone a little too far over. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This stays on the agenda topic, because what I'm asking is exactly what Counselor Marketti stated. He said, "You have yet to show proof that this money is coming from Casella. You've asked, he's asked for it." I'm staying on the agenda item. I'm just confirming it was in your budget. So I'm just responding back to the counselor. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Counselor Lazo.
What's in front of us procedurally is the reappointment of the person. The financing is already in the budget, as everybody is agreeing to. Asking a question about it is not out of order, because the justification of the reappointment could be financial to a counselor. If I financially think it's a waste of money to reappoint her, then I would say, "No." But the thing is, the appointment and the whole gamut of that position, its finance and performance, can be discussed under this agenda item. In other words, is it worth it? Do we need it? And the answer comes up to whatever council's favor is. For me, I'm voting yes tonight, because I want to finish this off. I've already, we've already talked about the money, I don't want to get into that, but as far as Anna Smith herself, I will support that. Some valid questions are brought up about, what is this position? In other words, we don't get reports. Who gets the reports? Is she reporting to Andy? Is she reporting to the Board of Health? Or is she reporting to DEP? Valid question. And I still think it pertains to the agenda item of the performance of this person. So for me, a good, healthy discussion and a vote is in line for Anna Smith, because I thought we might have been downshifting on her by now, but we need another year? We need it for another year.
Counselor Steves.
Yeah, I have one quick question that you may be thinking of, through you to either Andy or the manager. Have either of you actually done a performance review of Anna?
Done a performance review?
Yes.
I have not done a performance review on Ms. Anna Smith.
This year or ever?
Excuse me?
This year or ever?
I have, I have not done a performance review on any of my employees.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, through you to Counselor Steves, I want to say, it came up in recent discussions. I know other counselors that asked this question. When I arrived here, I noted that performance reviews had not been done in quite a period of time here in the town, and that's one of the things that I've discussed with the past chairman, and I've alluded to the new chairman, and it's something that I would like to work on. And I know, I want to say, Counselor Katrona asked me about this in the past, that it's something that we would like to implement here. I think it might have been Manager Clark was working on it prior to his departure, and so, but to answer your quick question, no, I have not performed any review upon her. But, you know, that's something that we need to address here in town.
Okay, thank you. Very good. All those in favor of the agenda item, raise your hand. All those against? Eight to one. Counselor Marketti against. Number 12, vote to confirm the reappointment of Evelyn Rivera as municipal hearing officer effective immediately through June 30, 2022. Ethics training in good standing.
Tomo, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven to two. Counselors Lazo and Adams opposed. Item number 13, point to confirm the reappointment of Keith Roberts as Veterans Grave Officer effective immediately through June 30, 2022. Ethics training in good standing.
Tomo, second.
Any discussion? Counselor Adams.
So thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to, again, tell the council, thank you for the vote that you provided last year, bringing Mr. Robertson. And one thing that has been a good thing, a part of our bylaws, is the fact that he's required to be a resident of this community, to be the grave officer. Whereas in a lot of other communities, the veteran service officer or agent is not required at all. And I just want to give a shout out to Mr. Roberts himself for doing a hell of a job this past year, playing catch-up on a lot of things. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? Very well. All those in favor? All those opposed? Unanimous of all present.
Mr. Chairman, can I just throw something in here? Counselor Marketti, I just heard him talking, he's right. We didn't get his, Mr. Roberts' paperwork here this evening with us. Just wanted to make note of that.
I'm aware of him, it's all right. There's no, it's not a problem, because I know-
It's what he voted on, so I just wanted to clarify.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I know we just voted on it, but it's by virtue of a position, that's why there's no paperwork.
Oh, okay.
In the charter, or the rules and regulations, in order to be the Veterans Grave Officer, you have to live in town, right?
Right, right, right.
In order to be the veterans, right? We had this discussion last year when we appointed Mr. Roberts, it was by virtual position that he-
And I just said it. I know, you're right. And you're right, thank you, Counselor, I appreciate it.
Very good. Item number 14, vote to confirm the reappointment of Caitlin Spencer as parking enforcement officer effective immediately through June 30, 2022. Ethics training in good standing.
Tomo, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Eight to one opposed by Counselor Ryan. Fifteen, vote to confirm the reappointment of Pamela Paquin to the Agricultural Commission effective immediately through June 30, 2024. Ethics training in good standing.
Tomo, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Eight to one, Counselor Steves opposed. Item 16, vote to confirm the reappointment of Chad Spleen to the Liquor Licensing Board effective immediately through June 30, 2024. Ethics training in good standing.
Tomo, second.
Any discussion? Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I got a question. The liquor board's only three people, and nobody came forward with a new application, just only him to reappointment?
I'm not aware. I know what was occurring in my office was, we were contacting, people were up for appointment, and gauging their interest, and then also requiring them to complete their ethics training if they wanted to be reappointed. Typically, if there's an application for any board, it's brought to my attention, and I haven't received, I mean, I receive occasional ones, and those are brought to the council, but I'm not aware that I've received anything new for the liquor board. Thank you.
Counselor Jolene.
I do know that we've had a vacancy of another member for that board as an alternate for at least the three years that I've been on council, that nobody is putting their names for, and we've advertised for that position multiple times. So that the fourth position on that board as an alternate's been vacant all three years that I've been here. So there's nobody banging down the doors to join that committee.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Very well. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Number 17, vote to confirm the reappointment of James Cullers to the Trustees of Soldiers, Sailors, Marines, and Airmen Memorials Committee effective immediately through June 30, 2024. Ethics in good standing.
Tomo, second.
Any discussion? Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. There has been some debate recently about whether this committee should be an elected committee and not an appointed committee. Has there been any discussion about that on the planning board, and what has, what has happened with that?
Counselor Adams.
But Counselor Steve says, I had it first.
Counselor Steves.
I just wanted to point out that that would be a charter issue, and the charter that they're an appointed board, so if, I said, that's a charter issue. If you think that they should be elected, bring it up to the Charter Commission. As of right now, they're appointed.
Well, if it's a charter issue, then this would be violating the charter if it's supposed to be appointed or elected.
They are appointed.
Elected, I mean.
No, they're appointed.
They're appointed.
I know they're appointed, but isn't it supposed to be elected? That's my question.
Appointed.
Appointed, they're a charter, they're appointed. I don't know if, I don't know what state law says.
Well, the state law says they need to be elected. Towns need to elect this committee, this particular committee, and I know that, if I could continue-
Go ahead.
I know that, you know, compromise here would be to at least find out first whether these need to be elected positions for the next ballot next year, or can we continue to appoint them? That would be my compromise anyway. It's something that should be looked at, but, I mean, I'll leave it up to the counselors.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you. I know there was a discussion on it, and maybe you have the Mass General Law in front of you, Counselor Marketti. I do believe if it was one side of government, it was elected, but if it was another form of government, it was appointed through the town council itself. So I don't know if I have, I don't have that in front of me, I don't know if you do.
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I have it right here.
Because we had long discussions on this.
So, under charter, power to appoint town boards and commissions, members of other such, and charter four dash three dash one, and the members of the boards and commissions, as the council deems appropriate, to establish, term of the members of such boards and commissions shall be staggered. Four dash three dash two, the town manager shall have the power to appoint, subject to confirmation by the town council, the following town boards and commissions, constables, commissioners of trust funds, and war war one memorial trustees. And then, under town of Southbridge bylaws effective September 4th, 2014, section three dash two two one, trustees of soldiers, sailors, marines, and airmen memorials, which we're doing. Establishment, there shall be a board of trustees of soldiers, sailors, marines, and airmen memorials appointed by the town manager, subject to confirmation by the town council, which shall consist of five members, three of whom shall be veterans, and two of whom shall be veterans of any war, referencing charter section four dash three dash one and four dash three dash two, and Mass General Law, chapter 41, section 105. So it's within our rules, it's within our charter, it's within our town bylaws, by establishment of town bylaws.
If I could respond, but I see that Counselor Steve has his hand up.
Counselor Steves.
Under Mass General Law, let's see, chapter 41, section 105.
Can't hear you.
Under Mass General Law, chapter 41, section 105, they state, you can remember, our town government is considered a city form of government.
I still can't hear you.
Yeah. Hold on. That's part of the problem, I got to be able to read this, this thing's a lie. Let's see, in cities, the board shall consist of the mayor and five members appointed by him and approved by the council, three of whom shall be veterans, and two of whom shall not be veterans of any war, obviously, if you don't have a mayor. Two members shall be appointed for one year, two for two years, and one for three years, as the term of each member expires. Successor shall be appointed for three years, yada, yada, yada. Let's see, specifically, it talks about, it does talk about electing, however, let's see. Where'd it go? In towns, the board shall consist of the chairman of the board of selectmen and five members elected by the town in the same manner as other town officers. Our government, our former government is a city form of government. So we fall into the first section, not the second section.
Well, if I could respond, the town charter identifies the town of Southbridge as a town. Now, you may think we are a city, but the charter says we are a town, so.
Form of government is a city.
I'm, I'm not going to make a big deal out of this, I just think maybe a compromise should be, maybe we should appoint this person for a year, or at least we find out whether maybe the state law, maybe somebody from the state says, "No, you can't appoint them," or "You can't appoint them," but to go ahead and appoint somebody till 2024, when we're not absolutely sure, are we a town or are we a city? That's the question, I guess. Because I've read the state law, I read it today, and if you're a town, you elect this committee. If you're a city, you appoint them, so. But I guess that is the question, are we a city or are we a town? I'll let it go at that, I'm not going to make a big deal out of it. Thank you.
Counselor Jolene.
Well, Counselor Marketti is raising some points about whether we're a city or a town. We are known as a town. Our form of government and title, the charter provides for a town council, town manager, form of town government, ruled under Southbridge Home Rule Charter. Right? Says, "The town of Southbridge shall be governed by those general laws applicable to towns where the laws of the Commonwealth distinguish between towns and cities. All the provisions of the law applicable to the town of Southbridge, except as otherwise specified, provided in this charter." The charter outlines the duties, it outlines what you can and cannot do, that's why we have this hybrid kind of government that we have. So the charter lays out what the town manager appoints, and we confirm, and we're governed by rules and regulations and bylaws. I just articulated what those bylaws- I just articulated what those bylaws state, it says the town of Southbridge appoints this board, or the town manager appoints, subject to confirmation by the council. There is no, in my opinion, humble opinion, confusion about that, we're run by a Southbridge Home Rule Charter. My good friend Counsel Lazo has more experience in this charter than I do, but that's my interpretation of it. It's all spelled out, it's spelled out, we, town manager appoints, we confirm, I do not state that there should be a compromise, appoint the way it's supposed to be appointed. We want to have the conversation about charter, and what that goes, go to the charter review that's going on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I don't wish to further confuse the point, Mr. Chairman, all I was going to point out is that, similar to what Counsel Jovan had indicated, there are certain times when, well, first, let me say, on the Secretary of State's website, it lists all the cities and towns in the Commonwealth, and we are one of fourteen that has an asterisk next to our name, that we do have a city-style form of government with a council, yet we are known as a town, and that there are provisions in our Home Rule Charter that says that we will be a town in certain rules and Mass General Laws, so when I've tried to interpret things, I have followed that, where I read the statutes to say that we are a town, however, unlike many other towns that have a board, a select board and town meeting, we have a council form of government. So, it, it may not always be clear at first glance, so you have to do some reading, but I didn't want to confuse the point any further.
Counsel Lazo.
Quick clarification, we have a city design, but we're a town council. Special legislation, nineteen seventy-three, I think it was, Jack Vought, put forth special legislation that this town wanted to remain a town, but they wanted a city design. So the way the special legislation went in, we take the place of the people, the manager takes the place of the selectman, if you look at a town meeting structure, and he recommends, and we confirm, and that's why we're a meeting in public, where we can have citizens forum and stuff like that, but we are a town, that is not even a gray area. I spoke, to show you how old I am, when I was on a council the first time, I spoke to the author of the charter, and he said, look, cities have city ordinances, towns have bylaws. For the first month that Southbridge went in, we had ordinance, we didn't, we made a mistake, and Lucian Duff was a gentleman, used to come up here and say, you're a city, we were a city, I think, for sixty days, then the special legislation, everything went in, town bylaws came in, and they strained it out within like ninety days, that we were a town, with a city-designed government. Thank you.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make a, a note that I know part of the charter states about the World War One Committee, that, that was there, that's something I've brought up to the, the Charter Review Committee as well, to, to remove that, my recommendation is remove that, to clarify since the trustees have been enacted by our bylaws. Thank you.
Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Eight to one, Counsel Mark Hattie. Number eighteen, vote to confirm the reappointment of Richard Clements to the Zoning Board of Appeals, effective immediately through June thirty, twenty twenty-four, ethics training in good standing.
So moved.
Any discussion? Very good, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Number nineteen, vote to confirm the reappointment of Nicola Todes to the Zoning Board of Appeals, effective immediately through June thirty, twenty twenty-four, ethics training in good standing.
So moved.
Any discussion? Counsel Steve's.
Just a quick question through you to the manager, should we stagger this one, since there are only three people on that board?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said, should we stagger his appointment, because there's only three people on that board, and that would mean two of them expire at the same time.
I, I don't know what the current overlap is, but generally, you would have, if you have three members, you might want one to come up every year versus more than one, but I don't know what the past practice has been here in Southbridge.
Counsel.
Do you know when the other person on that board expires?
Not offhand, no.
Counsel, any other discussion? Counsel Mark Hattie.
I was just curious if Counsel Steve's would like to make a suggestion, or amendment, or something? You raised the point.
You're right, you did. Hold on, actually, you should look up at the town, town office.
If not, then just move forward.
Their, their dates are not listed.
They're not.
Okay. Can I suggest we move forward? Any further discussion? Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, from my understanding, what I just received was Nick as the fourth member.
Oh, he's the, he's the alternate?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Number twenty, vote to confirm the reappointment of Thaddeus Stupski as constable, effective immediately through June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous of all present. Item twenty-one, vote that town council accept the donation of eighteen trees from the Opakam Land Trust and the Department of Conservation and Recreation for the Central Street Parking Lot Improvements, and ratify the tree planting permission form, and authorize the town manager to sign said form.
So moved.
Discussion, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, I just wanted, this is at P and D Subcommittee Meeting the other evening, and it was voted unanimously of all present.
Any other discussion? Counsel Steve's.
Yeah, I have to recuse myself, since Marion works for Opakam.
Very good. Any other discussion? Very well, all those in favor? Eight oh with one recusing. Number twenty-two, vote to approve the application for the U.S. Department of Agriculture, USDA, Housing Preservation Grant for a maximum of fifty thousand dollars for repairs to the home or rental unit of low-income residents.
So moved.
Counselor Adams.
Again, that was at the P and D Meeting the other evening, and it was voted unanimously of all present, in favor.
Any discussion? Counsel Mark Hattie, then Counselor Katrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, now, this fifty thousand dollar grant is for the entire state of Massachusetts, and I don't know if it was really worth the time and effort to put into this, maybe Southbridge might get it, but for the entire state, it's a pretty slim chance that we'll get it. The other issue is, this says it's for low-income residents, and then on below, it says to turn around blighted properties, and some of the examples that were used were sixty-one idle wood, and three eighteen Main Street properties, that could be, this could be used for, I don't know how those two are, are considered low-income residents, how do we know that those are low-income residents, first of all? Second of all, how do we, maybe sixty-one idle wood needs to be cleaned up, three eighteen Main Street, how do we know that that's blighted property? It doesn't look blighted to me, not from the outside, anyway. But the other thing that I, I look at this, and, and I've heard this so many times, for the past thirty years, you turn around, plan for the town of Southbridge, and sometimes I wish that we didn't qualify for these grants, because when are we going to turn it around? It's been like this for thirty years now, that Southbridge is a low-income community, and I just would like to know, going forward, what, what goal and objective are we going to have to actually turn things around in Southbridge, because, like I said, it would be nice if we didn't even qualify for this grant, because we could then say, the community is doing pretty well economically, and that's all I have, thank you.
Counsel Katrona.
What's that, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Any other discussion? Very well, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number twenty-three, vote to ratify J. H. Lynch proposed change order number twelve, in the amount of one hundred twenty-eight thousand, three hundred forty-one dollars and eighteen cents, for the Main Street Infrastructure Improvements Project funded using the American Rescue Plan Act.
So moved.
Discussion, Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, P and D, unanimous of all, all present, and in favor of, thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel Katrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a couple things, as I read through some of the paperwork that was in our packet, am I reading this correctly, that, that they have five years to complete this project? It says five-year moratorium in, in place, and I guess my, my second question is, it says to bring these properties into code compliance, how many years have they been out of code compliance? Who does the inspections? How do we know that they're out of code compliance?
I'll, I'll do the first one, the moratorium, excuse me, good evening, everyone, the moratorium is on cutting into the road, after the paving is done, there will be a moratorium on any roadwork on that road for five years, so there wouldn't be any new connection allowed on that roadwork for a five-year period, so you couldn't do any additional water line work to extend water services to the properties if needed within that five-year moratorium. Does that answer your question?
That does, yes.
And on the code enforcement is for future code enforcement, so anything that is done, like, any upgrades to any of the buildings in the future could trigger requiring sprinkler inspection, sprinklers. Current buildings, if they don't change what their uses are, don't trigger requiring having sprinklers, but as soon as you do any maintenance over a certain dollar amount, or do any renovations in a building that could change the use, that could trigger sprinklers.
Could I add one more?
Yep.
Yes, and so, may I, may I actually add to that? So there were specific instances, the, this conversation started because three eighteen had recently been vacated, and should we have an investor that wants to come into the building, they would need the fire lateral, and so, this created the precipice for us to go after the properties as quickly as possible, and say, we're in the midst of completing this project, if you want to go forward with a fire lateral, please go, please do it now. There was an auction on June, somewhere, early June, and so we were trying to make sure that whoever the potential new property owner was, they had a fire lateral, they considered the opportunity for a fire lateral, and then previous examples of existing fire, code compliance issues would be at three forty-four, at Hamilton and Main, for instance, there was a walkthrough for a potential candy store, and they were out of code compliance, they may, that, that may not have been specifically for fire laterals, but that just goes to show that these code enforcement issues continue to be a hindrance, so the candy store pulled out because the, the building wasn't up to code, and they weren't willing to make the investment.
If I can continue, Mr. Chairman? So, the code compliance, is that up to the new property owner to bring the business up to code, or, I see the town is, we're paying for this now, is, am I correct in stating that, and if it's been out of compliance for a long period of time, what am I missing?
A building as it exists is not necessarily out of compliance, when a new use gets proposed, or when significant renovation gets proposed, what's holding us off right now on a lot of buildings is, in order to market these buildings, and market the uses, a lot of people want to go in there with a different use than what was in there, or the use that was in there has been abandoned for two years, and is no longer a, quote, existing use. So, in order to get a new business into them, we've got to bring them up to today's code. They're not necessarily out of compliance per se, some of them are, but they're not necessarily out of compliance per se, they're out of compliance going forward, they, they won't meet the new use group.
So, some of these properties that I see are already owned, am I wrong in saying that? We can review them one by one if you'd like, I'm sorry I missed this Subcommittee Meeting, but it, it's my opinion that if we're going to bring these up to code, I don't understand why the town is paying for this and not the businesses.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, because I don't, I'm not in the line over there.
Mr. McCall.
Part of this is trying to be forward-thinking, we're going to spend a lot of money to redo the infrastructure on Main Street, and we're going to pave that, and so the thought process, again, this came out of part of the roundtable discussions we had with regard to the ARPA money, how can we best position ourselves for the future, and not recut into the pavement? And there was this particular instance, it came up with three eighteen, where it was being auctioned off, do we want to make this, or situate ourselves so that people could come in, and then build upon these lines that we lead out, or are we going to force people to wait five years, or are we going to yield to that and let them cut up all the money that we spend? So, the, the thought between everybody here was that we would put our thinking caps on, come up with a solution that would try and put us well-positioned to lure people in that want to change the use of some of these buildings, not cut up our brand-new pavement, and also make good use of the, these funds that have been provided by the feds, so that in, in essence, it's a win-win for us, and that, that was the pitch that we talked about here. And there's other heads nodding, that's essential, what we're trying to do, is not use taxpayer money, but use the money that's given to us for economic development incentive, piggyback that with the paving we're doing, and ensure that somebody doesn't cut it up again, so we're trying to be, you know, good stewards of the money and the project that we're working on.
Thank you, one more comment, again, I, thank you, Mr. Town Manager, and everyone for expanding on this, I guess my position is, I understand we're trying to recruit new businesses in town, but the properties that I see of a one are already owned, so could that money go to better use elsewhere?
Oh, boy.
And why isn't the property owner being hit with the fee to upgrade? And if there's been out of compliance for so many years, a couple of these properties and buildings have been owned, so, help me with the confusion.
So, there may be others that can speak to this, my understanding, because I haven't, don't have a lot of institutional knowledge here in town, is that, the frustration is there are people that are sitting on properties in our Main Street area that don't really have an incentive to upgrade them, because there are costs, so if they're going to change the use, they're going to have to do significant upgrades. By doing this, we help create that incentive, I know, I want to say it was at Subcommittee, when they, when the proposal was first made, it was only for a limited set of buildings, and then the question was, if we're just going to do one or two, why not make sure that everybody along Main Street has adequate access to all these, so, I want to say it was kicked back to the folks that are here, to include everybody, to ensure that we don't have to cut into the pavement again.
Thank you.
Counsel Lazo.
I think the word you're looking for, to the previous speaker, is pre-existing non-conforming. There are a lot of properties in Southbridge that are pre-existing, non-conforming, the Building Inspections Department uses a different terminology of a, not in compliance, but if you sell a building, and somebody uses the building for the same use, one moves out, one moves in within that two-year time, they haven't done any big renovations, then it's pre-existing, non-conforming use, it can continuously be used. Now, what we're doing with the road project is being proactive, economic development-type move of, if we want people to come into the downtown area, let's upgrade while we're in the street now, under the grants and all the other money that we're getting from the federal government, and, and bring the lines in. It's great thinking on, on, on the forefront, to try and be a little more aggressive with some of the people, as you say, might not want to renovate their building, but we have to look out for the town of Southbridge, our economic development, make sure that when this street is paved, that you're not blowing holes through the Main Street again, I think that's where we're headed with the plan, thank you.
Counsel Jovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to the group, thank you for the forward-thinking, to me, this is the way we look to, we, we're all talking about economic development, how do we bring businesses to town of Southbridge, how do we capitalize all the monies that we How do we capitalize all the monies that we have available? Um, thank you to the town manager and the group for looking at this project and saying, um, how can we use this to stimulate those buildings? We, we know that a lot of those, uh, you know, that, there hasn't been a lot of use, and, and this is one way that the town, uh, long-range thinking. It might not happen today, but, uh, somebody's going to look at that downtown and say, okay, there's, there's new life in there. And I thank you for looking at all those laterals that we talked about and how, you know, because there was some talk about, well, we could go off a side street while we're also doing the Hamilton, Main, uh, you know, Central Street corridors at some point, too. So, um, this is great forward-thinking for hopefully long-term success. At, yes, it's tax dollars. We all know we're going to pay for it one way or another. Everybody likes paying for it. But if the federal government's going to dump $1.7 million into the town of Southbridge, and we can use it in targeted, specific areas to improve the quality of our downtown, bring life to the downtown, um, and talk about that whole area, let's, let's just do it. And thank you to the team for working together, um, on this project to make sure that every step of the way, we're, we're getting the best that we can for that down. I can't wait till the downtown's done. Um, and that Main Street, trust me. My grandson loved it the other day. He was laughing in the backseat of the truck. But, uh, no, thank you for that. So, uh, I'm looking forward to the economic development down there. And I understand Counsel Katrona's point about, hey, the landlords are there, they haven't done anything to those buildings. But this is just an incentive to say, hey, look, the town's putting some money, well, we're getting, we're using great money to give you some opportunities here. Now step up and, and let's do it. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Adal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. The town, the town, actually, it's not going to pay for that, absolutely. He already mentioned that. But we're looking to get the 108 back, the one the town spent. So I think it's a good deal to prove that tonight. Maybe we can get the 108 back, uh, through that grant. And we can see always in the future to get, uh, betterment on those buildings, not necessarily give it to the landlord for free. We can always discuss that in the future. I don't think that's final, final now. If we put them under, under the ground, that means those landlords, they can use it for free. We can always put, you know, if they don't have the money, we can, the town do some kind of, uh, payment through the tax, whatever. So, thank you.
Counsel Katrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Are there any commitments from any of these landlords?
Not that I am aware of. But at, to that point, when the landlord did, does select to connect, they will have to pay the connection fee for that size of that fire line. So the town will be recuperating whatever our fees are at that time for that connection. We can have additional discussions whether our fees need to be raised. That usually is done at a water sewer rate hearing, but that could be a possibility if you think those fees aren't high enough. We could potentially discuss that. But a fee, don't quote me because I'm thinking off the top of my head, but for a six-inch fire line is $8,000 that they pay directly to the town as a connection fee.
Thank you.
And then they also pay a usage fee, a connection fee, part of their bill for having the fire line every quarter also.
Counsel Lazo.
Just a quick question. When they paint the line, JHL, that's where the sidewalk's going to be replaced to, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I was contacted by the Savers Cooperative Bank, one of employees, and Lynch did the entrance on the corner there going down Central Street. But then the town sidewalk for about another, I don't know, 10 feet, it looks like it's blown up. There used to be a tree there, there's a big hole where it loomed and stuff. But the J, the JHL line is cut where the bad sidewalk should be taken out.
I, I will, I will be reviewing the sidewalk areas with JHL. We already had a discussion about it. But those blank areas are supposed to be for plantings. We're going to relook at doing plantings after.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, they put the bricks in, and then it heaves up. And you can't even run the snow blower, you can't maintain the sidewalk when you're plowing it or shoveling, I should say. So, but JHL painted the line beyond the blighted sidewalk like they were going to do it.
Okay.
But then they didn't do it with that corner, and I didn't know if that, don't know if it gets done, so I can relate back.
Yeah, I will be reviewing the areas and, and making sure that we get as much done within the budget as we can.
Going down Central Street is right on the corner, you can't miss it. Thank you.
Counsel Mark Eddy.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Um, it, it makes a lot of sense to get this all done once, before the paving is done, so that we don't have to tear it up again. So it makes perfect sense. I think it's a good idea. The connections, just, maybe you could explain it to me. The connections are going?
We are bringing the laterals?
To the sidewalk?
Into the sidewalk areas.
So they won't have to dig up the?
So we will have to dig, if they're going to make a connection, they'll have to dig in the sidewalk, but they won't have to dig in the pavement.
All right.
It's a lot easier to replace one panel of sidewalk or two panels of sidewalk than it is to match pavement.
All right.
So it's only going to be in the sidewalk area. They're not being brought into the buildings.
Okay. Well, it makes a lot of sense to me to get this done now. Thank you.
Counsel Katrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just one more question for clarification for my part. So if these buildings, and I understand what Counsel Lazo stated earlier, but if some of these buildings or properties have been owned for an extended period of time, and yet we're hearing now that they're out of compliance, why are we doing this now? What am I missing? Why hasn't this been brought up last year? Or why haven't these landowners or property owners been spoken to in the past?
As Counsel Lazo mentioned, a building can continue to exist as long as it maintains the use group and doesn't do extensive renovation. By not putting these laterals in, we are encouraginging the landlords not to progress their buildings, to keep the same stagnant type of building, of businesses. We're, we're not encouraging them to change their business, update their business, to Mr. Marketti's point, start this town moving forward. We're in a stagnant state right now because as long as it exists, as it exists, you don't have to change it. It's, it's called grandfathering. It's, it's a non-conforming use or a non-conforming structure. Going forward, a new use wants to come in, we want to encourage a new use by putting these laterals in.
Thank you. Counsel Adal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, Counsel Katrona. It's not out of code right now, because it's existing grandfather use. If they want to do new construction, they have to meet the new, uh, codes. Then they need a fire pressure, because those three deckers or businesses, some of them on Main Street don't need it if it's two-family. But three-family plus, they need a fire pressure system if they're going to do renovation in them. So they're getting prepared for that. That's why not all the building, uh, those pipes, certain building only. So right now, it's not out of code, it's not, uh, when they start doing construction in them, then they have to meet the new code. Then they need to spring the system, the pipe already there. Hopefully, we'll be betterment in the future, though those guys pay what the town put the money in or the grant, whatever. That's extra money for the town, actually, because now we're getting a grant. Later on, we're going to charge the, the person for, for connecting. It's going to be, have I understood right?
Eight thousand dollars.
Or only for the connection fee, not for the pipe.
Right.
Thank you.
Counsel Adams.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, not to, I just heard your, your comment about betterment fees. Is there a possi, no.
I, I mentioned betterment fees to Melissa when we started talking about this, and she said, um, betterment fees get very tricky. It'd be very simple if we were bringing a new water line or a new sewer line into a brand-new area, and we got everybody, we voted, and we got enough people to agree to do betterment fees at that time. A betterment is kind of like a tax, and you have a certain round of time to bring, go back. I know we have done betterment fees here prior to me, but I know they still are getting paid for sewer lines that were extended in certain areas in the past. And those property owners basically signed an agreement, and they say, yes, I agree to this, and this is how much I'm getting reimbursed. If you are looking to try to recoup some of those costs, it's not through a betterment fee that you would do it. It would be through your connection fees. A connection fee is how you do it after the fact, when there's already an existing line there. I can't legally say that, so I shouldn't say that, but that's kind of how it works.
And possibly raising the fees down the road.
You could possibly raise the fees.
Counsel Adal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just a question for the town manager. So if the person, uh, he came in and he have to do a update to the building and connect, so that grant, we put those pipe underground to not open the road, we're not helping the, the landlord to give him break if they don't have the $10,000 or $8,000 taken, the town help do that payment for him on the connection fee, or no? Have to pay upfront? I mean, I don't mean like a betterment, like, like how to explain, uh, a new or, or, or extension, but we doing this to help the future landlord to improve the building, make it easy on him?
So the way I see it, if I may, Mr. Chairman, we're doing it for the betterment of the community in that if, if you feel things are stagnant, something has to change. And by doing this before we put down our final code of payment, we put ourselves in a position that the existing landlord might say, hey, it's there, I didn't have to do that, I could do something with my building and make a better use of it. Or that might incentivize them to sell it because it may have some added value to somebody who really wants to come in. Because they may, I don't know why these people haven't taken it upon themselves to do anything. But I think the catalyst here was that the sale of 318 Main Street and the discussion of, okay, what's the next person going to do? And how do we better position ourselves, um, not only for that building, but for the others? And now we have this pile of money that this fits into that water sewer infrastructure. Let's take that and do something with it. And I give the credit over there to these people. I mean, they involved me in the discussion along the way, but this came up through that sale and their involvement with those, you know, that's the team that you have here, people working together. And then, you know, we have these roundtables to say, what can we do with these monies? And so this is the byproduct of all that. So it, you know, yes, it may provide some benefit to these people, but the long run is, it's the benefit to the town and hopefully incentivizing the economic development either through the existing landlord or somebody wishes to buy it, and also not disrupting the, the payment that the taxpayers are going to pay to put down.
Thank you. Counsel Lazo.
Uh, just one quick question. I know there was, uh, one of the buildings on Main Street doesn't have a line run to it. Would it be worth, in this project, to run a stub to the sidewalk so they don't go into the road?
Do you know which building?
Yeah, the one we're having all the problems with.
That's 318.
What's that?
318.
318?
Yes, that's in what is included here.
Right. Did we run a stub to the sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what we're, that's what this is proposing to do.
Okay.
For the fire line. They do have a water line already, but...
I salute your proactive approach to Main Street. Since it started, I've always been on board with, you know, if somebody sells the building and then they say, somebody with money is going to redo this building and put a prosperous business in there, or whatever they're going to do to the building, now's the time to run the stubs and then let it, you know, they could tie in later if they had to. My, my thing is, is that when a code changes, like when they had the fire down in Rhode Island, I think it was, the fire code changed, they said anything under 100, no, anything, they, they downsized the, the capacity for needing a sprinkler system. And then they downsized it again to like 100. I happened to build my building, and I had like 94 seats capacity. It's calculated by the square footage. And if the code changes again and they downsized it again, I'm now with a building that's, I don't know, six years old, pre-existing, non-conforming. And if I do any renovation on a building up, above a certain percent, I'm going to have to bring it up to code. And that's going to constantly evolve. The codes change, and they're going to, whether it be fire or building codes, the pre-existing, non-conforming, at some point, when the building deteriorates and somebody does a big renovation, they have to bring it up to code. But that's why we have non-conforming buildings. It's not because somebody didn't inspect it. It's the way it is. Thanks.
Any further discussion? There being none. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 24, vote to ratify the Burton Engineering Incorporated proposal to the Town of Southbridge Inspection Services Department for peer-review consulting services relative to the renovation of the commercial property designed by the Architectural Team Incorporated, TAT, at American Optical Company Complex, Building 12, 515 K Street, in the amount of $15,000, and authorize the town manager to sign the proposal and all related documents. So move. Mr. Mark Eddy.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So this, you mentioned this at the planning and development, it was a last-minute thing. Are we, is the town paying this, and then we're being reimbursed by Franklin Realty? Thank you.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, um, I've been working with the inspections Department, Mr. Pelletier, as well as Mr. Julian, Rick, Rich Relish, Relic, who was involved with the Wells project. He's with Wind Development, and they're working with the K Street development down with the Franklin Realty properties, as you may be aware of. So he came to us after he brought over the plans, he, to, to, in order to get a permit, he brought in a thousand-page, um, project, Andy might have to help me with some of the terms, a project narrative as well as about 250 schematics. And he asked, how could we get this, uh, an expedited review? And he asked, again, if we could do something similar to we did with the Wells, and he had offered to pay for it. So we threw Andy and Mike Julian, they went out and got quotes. Burton was the, the lowest quote. Mr. Relish's firm agreed to pay for it, the $15,000. I had a text earlier, the, they had mailed the check to us. We haven't received it as of yet. Mr. Relic was going to look into it tomorrow morning, but if this is approved tonight, the, the money should be here from the Wind Development in order to put the retainer down to pay for it. So we wanted to be the principal in the contract, so we have oversight. We didn't want the, the applicant paying for their own third-party review. Um, again, we're the town, and this would be a benefit to the applicant by way of us. So we procured the engineering review. They're going to reimburse us for that amount, the $15,000. But in the end, it's to expedite the permitting process so that they can move forward and try and get in the construction cycle to break ground and go forward on the K Street development. And if there's any specific questions, Mr. Pelletier, I know is here.
Counsel Katrona.
Thank you. My question was just answered, but brings up another question. Um, at the P and D meeting, um, this was brought up at the end of the meeting. This wasn't, not on the agenda, is that correct? I'm asking a question.
Counsel Adams.
Thank you. Yeah, that was brought up then.
So we're able to add agenda items for some committees, but not others? And I know where, you know where I'm going, Mr. Town Manager? I'm not going to dispute this with you this evening. The public wasn't notified. I don't believe that this was to be on the meeting. Nobody knew. If they did, maybe the public would have come to the meeting. And yet, at another subcommittee meeting, we were shut down inadvertently for bringing new agenda items up. So with that being said, um, I, I have no problem voting for this this evening. Thank you.
Counsel Lazo, then Counsel...
Um, just a point of clarification. This is going to be reimbursed to the Town of Southbridge, correct?
Yes.
Okay. As far as it being, it going to subcommittee or not, that's always been my call as PPP. We had some, uh, pressuring timeframes with some appointments, with some money, and to me, as a counsel, we have to be flexible to try and make these things happen so we can get the, the money in a timely manner, contracts done in a timely manner. We're always, and, and I'm, I'm a counsel, we'll do whatever it takes to get the job done. And I think that my, my, the previous chairman was very flexible with that, uh, as far as we need to get this guy appointed so we can get him to the academy, because the academy's only, is only a window of opportunity. So I would say, skip PPP, bring you right to the council chamber, have the debate on the floor. We don't want to do that, but in some cases, and I can, and I can refer to, to former chairman, you do whatever it takes to get the job done, the manager's on it. And, uh, if we're getting reimbursed on this, I'm good with it. If we're not getting reimbursed, I was going to have a problem. If we're not getting reimbursed, I was going to have a problem. Thank you.
Counselor Adams, then Counselor Ryan.
Just wanted to clarify it to Counselor Katrona, and it may, it may not clarify, but the item, first of all, wasn't an agenda item. It was something that the town manager briefly discussed to us. It was nothing that we voted on. It was not all at the last minute. He made it very clear that it would be on the town council's agenda, not ours per se, but he just wanted to inform those counselors that were there that evening that it would come up on the town council agenda, just for clarification. We said, got it, and we moved on and we actually adjourned at that point.
Counselor Ryan, then Counselor Joe Ryan.
I withdraw my question because Counselor Adams has answered it.
Very good. Counselor Joe Ryan.
Just to echo what Counselor Adams said, I certainly understand Counselor Katrona's concerns about how we've had conversations about previous agenda items. Town manager was very clear that he said, I just want to, as information only, this will be coming to the council on Monday night. And I commend the town manager in his effort to be transparent to everybody in the council because he stated that he could have done a request, he could have just done a simple quote and not had it come to council, but he felt that because of the parameters of this, it was a contract. And it was not time to get, he had contacted me as chairman of the council at that time, during that period of time. We don't have time to go to plan and development, it's late on the agenda. Can we move it right to council? Again, economic development, let's move on, let's get things done. We certainly don't want to usurp any subcommittees or stuff, but things do come up last minute. And again, the two seconds that he sent saying, just to let you know, it's going to come to the full council, it was just an information type thing. So I get that. So thank you. I'll defer to the town manager, I guess, so that he can respond.
Mr. Manager.
So in the chronology of things, if I may, Mr. Chairman, the open meeting law says if you can't add anything, must be on your agenda prior to 48 hours, prior to posting. The only way you're supposed to put anything on an agenda is if it was, wasn't reasonably anticipated. One of the problems that I had here was we didn't get the last quote till the night before on Thursday night, and then I didn't get to discuss the quote with Mr. Relic until, I want to say, Friday afternoon, at which point he said he wanted to go forward with the particular contractor, given the price. At that point, clerk's office is closed for the day due to the holiday on Monday. Mathematically, we could not get it on the P and D agenda. So I had then called the chairman and asked permission to move it forward and I let the members of P and D know because of that. And the rationale was, I'd spoke with Burton Engineering and when they gave the quote, they were trying to put together their schedule to review projects. And right now, there's a lot of construction going on. And they had indicated if we were to continue this and I was to wait another two weeks or more to put it on their agenda, that they might not be able to do that. That was one of the considerations that I went, you know, went through my head when I called the chairman. We did, as the chairman said, discuss whether or not this should be invoiced or not. But the way this proposal is written, it looks like a contract to me. So I thought it would be the most prudent and responsible thing is to go through in front of the council, have them ratify the contract and go forward rather than just have them invoice. So again, to be transparent and because of the timing, that was the route that I chose.
Counselor Katrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Not to debate this much further, to some of the previous speakers, there was an EHS meeting, I won't get into that now because that's not what we're discussing. But in direct conflict of that, this was more than a three-second conversation, if you watch the tape, this was a five-minute-plus discussion that you had with the P and D subcommittee. So I refute that. It just seems like we do things when we want or when it's convenient to get things done for this council instead of doing things correctly. Maybe things will change with this council, but we can't do things one way sometime in other ways just to get what we want done. The previous chairman stated repeatedly, I'll have a meeting, I'll call a meeting at any time to get anything done. So my point is, this could have happened at any time and it could have gone before committee. Thank you.
Counselor Al.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I don't have any problem for, you know, something like this. We need it to be urgent to move on in some certain project, but I have a problem when the agenda go to the subcommittee, the subcommittee meeting and doesn't pass and then you come up here, it's here. That's what I have problem. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Lozlo.
Going forward, I, I'm sorry, I have to disagree with my fellow colleague on this. I hope Chairman Daniels, you as a chairman, once we assemble our subcommittees, that we continue on the hard push for accomplishments and getting things done. People get frustrated when government just gets like a rubber ball, just keeps twining and, you know, it just bounces around and doesn't get anything done. It wasn't too long ago, a council would turn around and say, refer to subcommittee, go back to council, go back to subcommittee, go back to council. This council, in the last few years, under Jack's leadership, if I may use his first name, he had a subcommittee group that was basically, let's move the ball down the field, so to speak. And sometimes maybe it wasn't done exactly correct. Maybe we didn't take it to subcommittee and deliberate it. But when we get on the floor, it got deliberated, it was posted properly. He always crossed the Ts, dotted the Is, and he had a tough time with COVID and the virtual meeting, back to the regular meeting. I think as a council, we did our job to the best of our ability. And I still think that we move things faster in the last two or three years than we have in a long time. I hope that when a leadership team is assembled with your subcommittees, that we maintain the same aggressive, have a meeting as fast as possible. If you can have a meeting, bring it directly to the council, they're supreme and pass the item. So we don't stop the Main Street project. We don't stop the Wells project, the registry and all the other accomplishments that this council did. This is what we have to maintain, is that fast, brisk, transparent, aggressive council that we've always been. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I think the problem is when Counselor Katrona had his EHS meeting and he wanted to add an agenda item, it was shut down. And I think that that's where the problem lies. If it's going to be okay for one person, it ought to be okay for everyone. So that is really the only, I think, the issue that Counselor Katrona has with this. I don't want to speak for him, but I think that's what it is. I mean, I, I'm glad that this has come forward and I'm certainly willing to support it. But I think that if we're going to be fair, we should be fair for all counselors and all subcommittees. Thank you.
Counselor Adams.
I'll refer to Counselor Ryan.
I was just going to move, I was going to move the question. We've discussed the same points, move the question.
I know, but you can't move a question to stop somebody from talking.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. You certainly can raise a, move a question. It's up to the body to decide whether they want to move the question or not.
So I put the motion out.
I second, I second the motion.
No, but I've read, I've read Robert's rules and you can't move a question when somebody wanted to speak.
Counselor Adams seated the ground to me, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, when someone states a point of order, everybody has to stop talking. You don't have to like the point of order. Now you have to rule on the point of order or moving the question. You have to stop discussion and move the question. And there's a motion, a second, we have to vote on immediately, and that's it. There is no discussion over who did what. We, immediately, that stops discussion and we vote on the item. Move the question.
Very good. All those in favor?
Of moving the question.
Of moving the question.
Yep.
Those against? Seven to two for moving the question. The question is moved, therefore it comes up again. All those in favor of the question? Unanimous of all present. Item number 25, council's forum. Counselor Al.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Congratulations on the chair, vice chair. Hopefully we'll continue in a good vein. And I want to thank the town managers, DPW, Mrs. Gee Laff for all the hard work and working on the Main Street. And Heather, thank you for working on the volleyball court. And I don't know if you got my message. And hopefully that will be speed up a little bit before the winters because the guys wait and every day they call me, they're excited. So thank you.
Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to congratulate you and Counselor Adams on your elections. I think you two will be very good at the helm of leadership. I'm excited about what this new council and this new leadership is going to bring. And I'm looking forward to another productive year.
Counselor Lozlo.
I too would like to take a moment to congratulate Chairman Daniels and Vice Chairman Adams on their appointment. And I think that this council has a bright future ahead. There are no big changes via the election. So we understand where the foundation has been built in the last five, three years, I should say, two to three years. A lot of foundations have been placed. And I think we've got a lot to build on and add to and with some long-range planning, I think we could really push for a turnaround in Southridge, obviously much quicker than the schools, but I think we can make a comeback here. We have a lot of people want to come here and do things. Let's not be obstructionist and tie it down in government. Let's be fluid and work with this manager and let's get the job done like we've done in the past couple of years to the leadership. Anything I can do, wherever you need me at any time, I'm there for you. As far as appointments, I'd like to stay where I am, but again, it's not, it's not an I thing with me. It's whatever you need, I'm there for you guys. Thank you.
Counselor Steves.
I don't have anything to add, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, very good. Counselor Katrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just a few things I'd like to bring up. The traffic light on Main to Elm Street is missing the arrow to take a left onto Elm from Main Street. Is there a reason why?
I've probably answered this question about 500 times by now.
I haven't heard the answer.
First of all, the, I would ask even the public that might still be listening and all the counselors to please be patient because the traffic lights are not functioning at their full, the way they are going to function in the future. They are up there just on regular cycle timings. They don't have their cameras set up, they aren't functioning with their full functioning motions at this time because they have just been installed. The design of the traffic lights, the way we designed them and the way that it was put in to the design, did remove the left turning arrow. That was done to shorten the cycle time of the light on Main Street, therefore moving more cars directly through Main Street and up and making the path on Main Street move better. I brought this up to the designer and they will look at it once the traffic is all back in place. It is still possible to change the lighting and change to the left turn arrow, but that will slow the traffic turning motions down slower. What will happen and what is already happening is people will find different ways to take that same turning motion on Elm Street than that they used to be able to get the light, either by turning up Everett Street, turning up Goddard Street, or turning in a different location. But we will be reevaluating it once everything and all the lighting is complete to see if we still do have a problem there or not with removing the left turning signal.
It's my belief it's a hazard right now. It's going to continue to be a hazard. It's a life safety hazard when we, until we see accidents there. Moving, moving forward with my, some of my comments, Heather, while you're here, the Main Street, we all know it's going to be repaved in the fall. Correct?
Well, there will be a temporary pavement layer put down across the trench, which was been spoken of previously. That is currently being scheduled because most of the mainline work, now we just added more work there. But the idea, in speaking to the contractors, he would like to put that down now to get that as level and smooth through that area as soon as possible. And then he'll make square saw cuts where he has to make the connections that we just approved. And because the pavement will be level, it will be easier to pave up to in the future when he repaves.
So when you say as soon as possible, when is that?
He's scheduling it right now, so it's probably two to three weeks out.
Okay, very good. Because right now, that's terrible. I'm surprised Lynch even did that. And we all know that. It has been terrible for quite some time and they're...
Well, they, they were still working on their regular trench work up until last week, doing their final connections.
I, I understand that and the patches, and you've explained the way that the road has to settle, but it's still inexcusable, the work that they've done. In my, again, it's my opinion. Thank you. Congratulate the chairman and vice chairman. Thank you for your time and congratulate you both. Thank you. Bring up a few more things and maybe when subcommittees get ironed out, we can bring up, I haven't had any conversation with the town manager as of yet, but I would like to bring back to the table, I know it was discussed briefly at a subcommittee meeting recently, but the benefits for the retirees, some of the health benefits. I, I think that's worth discussion and worth bringing up again. I know it was brought up at one of the last subcommittee meetings. A couple other things. In the next year, I know I've been very vigilant with the rail trail and holding the schools accountable for their spending, again, spending taxpayer dollars. And I'd like to see both of these come to fruition, especially the schools. I know right now, there is no exit plan. Dr. Vilar stated that at the budget meeting. As rude, as arrogant as that man was, it was inexcusable. And I think we need an exit plan and we need one quickly to get this town, to help this town turn around and to attract new businesses and new homeowners. I had the opportunity, the unfortunate opportunity to spend time at Harrington Hospital recently, without going into detail, but they were recently taken over by UMass. If the public doesn't know that, they should. And although my experience there was, was unfortunate to be there, the couple days that I was there was, was, thank all the nurses, doctors and the security staff and everyone else at the hospital was, was exceptional, to say the least. And now with UMass there, it's a different look and it's, they're completely online. So one more thing, and I brought this up to Counselor Adams earlier, once subcommittees get ironed out again, maybe something that I shared with him this evening and he can bring up to, maybe talk about, to maybe someone else in the town about some of the, some news with the rail trails. We have some neighboring towns that are doing things with the rail trails and they're calling them airline trails. And then they also go into Webster. So they, Connecticut has taken seven towns and they promoted them to, and they have gotten some funding. So, and I have discussed that just this evening with Counselor Adams. That's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I did want to ask at some point, the DPW director that she could provide us with an update on the road improvement plan, what's been started, completed, ongoing. If you could just, we don't have to, you don't have to answer tonight if you don't.
I'd just give you an update. We're still in the process of doing the contract for the mill and overlay.
Okay.
So that contract hasn't been signed, but I have had conversations with them about coming out and walking in the site with me. That was scheduled for Friday morning and it was a deluge. And then it was scheduled for this morning and it was a deluge again. So we're going to try one time again tomorrow. Before even the contract was signed, he said he wanted to start getting all the, you know, his, how he wanted to address it and work. So we're still waiting for a signed contract until that could be done. But if you, we, the overall pavement management plan, obviously we've already done some work addressed.
You have.
Well, because we've already done improvements on Brentwood and those improvements had already been done, but they, they aren't reflected in the pavement management overall number yet. So that would need an update to that plan. We will do that as soon as, we've talked about doing it every fiscal year. So we'll get with the consultant and make sure that that is updated.
All right, thank you. I know that back when you were doing the... I know that back when you were doing the bids for the crack ceiling and fog ceiling, that you said it would be starting in June, and I really haven't seen too many trucks.
They haven't started yet, but their contract is good for a year. We don't have a, you know, we can't...
We don't want to wait till November.
I understand that, and so do they. But they are getting us on their schedule, they know the roads that we want to do.
Thank you.
They've been provided all that, and they will provide us with the schedule.
All right, thank you very much.
You should also, just for point information, you should see line striping trucks here Thursday, they're scheduled for Thursday night. But of course, that is weather-dependent.
All right.
Hopefully it stops raining.
Thank you, appreciate it. The other thing I wanted to say is that I had an opportunity to sit down with former State Representative Mark Karen the other day, and he had some pretty good insight, pretty good ideas for the town of Southbridge. One of the things that he suggested that we do, as it's a council that we have, sit down and have some goals and objectives, and I thought it was a pretty good idea going forward. What do we want to see happening in this town within the next few years? And I thought maybe that was something the new chairman might be interested, having some kind of roundtable with Mark Karen. Sit down, let's see what ideas he brought forward, because I thought they were pretty good ideas. I really am looking forward to this new council session, and I'm, as with Counselor Lazo, wherever you want me to serve, I'm great with that. So thank you very much, and congratulations on you and Counselor Adams. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Jovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, congratulations to you and Counselor Adams. Look forward to working with you over the next year. Couple things. First, I did have the opportunity to be at the UMass Harrington Memorial July 1st when they had the event along with the town manager. I think, listening to the speakers and the board and Ed Moore, certainly Harrington Hospital is not going to go anywhere. It's an important institution, not only here in Southbridge, but in the Catch Basin. The mission of UMass and Harrington looks like it's going to be a good marriage, call it family, and I think you got that sense when you attended that event. So UMass is here, and we look forward to working with them. I read through Representative Durant that we have received the airport grant funding of $7 million, so congratulations to all that work. Look forward to, a lot of work there for the airport improvements, so $7 million, a lot of money coming to the town of Southbridge. Another kudos to everybody that worked on that over the last year. Also, when I was at UMass, the UMass Harrington event, had the opportunity, along with the town manager and the fire chief, to have aid to Congressman Nail attend that event with us. Kareem, from his office, came down and wanted to tour the fire station that was brought up earlier this evening, and we are very much in communication with Congressman Nail's office to pursue any and all opportunities for them to provide whatever funding or means to the town of Southbridge regarding the fire station project. There was talk earlier this evening from an earlier speaker that stated that not knowing what was going on in town, something so important. Well, council meetings are posted every two weeks or twice a month. They're posted on the website. Citizens, if you want to be engaged, you want to know what's going on, go to the website, call the town hall, there's boards, there's commissions that need filling. Those meetings were posted. The Cable Committee was at every single meeting that we did this year. Kudos to the Cable Committee for all the hard work that they did, all the guys that work in the cable office, because they brought a lot of content, a lot of hard work during those Zoom meetings to be able to provide information and live-stream programs to the town. Even through COVID pandemic, we did the very best to make sure that all that information was filtered out to the residents. Some people may feel that they didn't get enough information about the fire station, but there was a lot of information put out there. Reverse 911 to say that where the vote in place was changed to. Flyers from the opposition sent to taxpayers. Information out there, programs, it was on YouTube. There was a lot of conversation about, no time is a good time to put a ballot question before the voters, but at some point you had to put a question out there. It was for the voters. To the council over the next year, there was dialogue about subcommittee meetings and formulation of those agendas. I think it's important that the general government subcommittee take a look at our rules and regulations and update those rules and regulations to make sure that whatever the format of agendas for subcommittee meetings meet muster with the open meeting law. That is the crux of the question here about whether and how you can bring information to meetings. If you know that you wanted something on the subcommittee and you're texting somebody in a parking lot about whether it's going to be there, you knew it was going to be on that agenda. The unanticipated thing is the town manager saying, "This came up, I have this paperwork, I need to get it, it's going to go to full council." We can't stop government, but you have to do it right. I may not be perfect, I may not have been perfect as the chair. I may have stopped some things, but I tried to do what was best in the interest of the town of Southbridge and to make sure that we pass muster with open meeting law provisions. And in order to do that, we have to have a dialogue as a council to make sure that whatever we put on agendas does meet the new open meeting law requirement. Well, we call it the new open meeting law requirements, but it is the open meeting law So to have simple new business, you can't do it just the way it is. It's tough, but somebody can bring something up in a meeting, but it's just a conversation. It's just, but you can't have it as new business to have a debate about it. Information as to, hey, I want to see on the next agenda, if you're at EHS, I want to see on the next agenda, I'd like to have the receiver here to talk about ABC. Mr. Chairman, is that okay? That would be okay, because all you're doing is requesting information and saying, hey, for a future agenda, I want to talk about this. Or, hey, I'm going to come to council, it's general information. But if you're going to talk about state of something in a meeting that wasn't posted, it's not going to pass muster. So I hope that we look at those type of things in the rules and regulations and make sure that whatever we develop, we do it just right. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Vice Chair Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just want to thank everybody, all the counselors up here, regardless of how the votes went and all that kind of stuff, I just want to say thank you for all your hard work and your passion. I mean, obviously, the council looks pretty much the same as it did last year. On that note, I would sit there and tell, and Counselor Jovan had brought that up about the speaker at Citizens Forum this evening, which I respect that, and I understand that sometimes it's hard to find some information, but you have nine counselors up here who can provide that information to any citizen or resident here that would be happy to provide the meetings, the dates, the times, and stuff like that. And I would recommend those individuals, I do it all the time, and I post on social media. Social media, in my mind, is a very good communication tool, if used properly, than not play the telephone game. Social media is a good opportunity to vent some of your stuff, but actually go to the council and have questions answered. But I would sit there and tell everybody else out there, if you want to get involved in your town, not just council, but maybe subcommittees and some of these boards and commissions, fill out the intent form and submit it to the town manager's office. It's not that difficult. I would recommend, you know, next June, we have elections annually. Next June, we're going to have council elections again. If you really want to run for council, I would sit there and recommend that people start filling the seats to listen in or listen in via, through our cable access. So I would highly encourage that of the individuals as the residents of this community that want to make change, that want to have some great ideas and maybe we can bring forward. But the counselors are here to answer any questions that you may bring up, and, you know, I just would hope that they would be as interested in our community as they're interested in Facebook sometimes. And a lot of residents are very involved, and we appreciate all the people that volunteer their time and energy to this community. And I think that's it, that's all I got. So maybe just go and announce the, okay. Agenda item number 26, well, I'm sorry, what's that? Oh, he didn't go through it? Yeah, he did.
You said you were all set.
You said you're all set, Counselor.
You said you're all set.
Yeah? Maybe it was just long-winded up here. All right, agenda item number 26, next meeting will be Monday, July 26, 2021, at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers.
Very good. Agenda item 27, vote to enter in executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to the opioid litigation update, which, if discussed in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body and from their vote to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Real call vote.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Katrona.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Dow.
Yes.
Counselor Jovan.
Yes.
Counselor Lazo.
Yes.
Counselor Marketti.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
And Counselor Steves.
Very good. Very good. We're adjourned to executive session.